I appreciate everyone being here today. We will start the meeting with the opening of the meeting and the call over. Roll call, please.
Can you wait just a bit?
Yep. I will say this as before we do roll call. A couple of things for board and the audience. We have over, well over 100 comment cards turned in. If you're in a group, I would like you to pick a spokesperson for your group. And I'll give that spokesperson three minutes. If you're not in a group and you're an individual, you're going to get one minute today because otherwise we could be here for 10 hours. I will be, I will give you leniency on the topic. The first topic is very broad, so I'm going to allow comments that are also broad. We most often narrow comments specifically to the wording of an agenda. The wording of the first agenda item here is very broad, so I will allow a lot of general comment. I am going to ask you to be brief. I ask you to be respectful. I'm going to be respectful in return. I will have to ask you to wrap it up, just for the sake of us being able to continue with our business. I will also say, we haven't called the roll yet, but I want the audience to know this and I want board members to know this as well. There is an executive session item on the agenda, assuming the agenda's approved. I do not believe we're going to need executive session. Okay? I want everyone to know that. There could be a circumstance that changes, but I know many people are anxious about that. I know we have many cards specifically regarding that. So, I wanted that to be clear as well. Finally, I want to thank board members. It's been a challenging couple of weeks in turn of events, and we're doing our best to work through them in a respectful and businesslike manner. And I appreciate the patience board members has had with me as I've tried to get us to this meeting. And I hopefully, that will, the meeting will go well and facilitate a very good conversation. That being said, I only await roll call.
How do you tape recorder?
Tape recorder's on the blink. Just so, I will go ahead in anticipation of what will happen, we will. I will make a general open remark. Then I will turn it over to the superintendent to go through agenda item number one. I will let board members ask questions in relation to that, and then I will go to public comment in that order. My guess is the first item will be the most lengthy, and that's the one that's the broadest and that's the one that I'm going to allow the most discussion. So, again, I ask you to be respectful. I ask you to be respectful of the other speakers. We have very many cards. If you did not mark if you want to speak or not speak, you know, when I, if I call your name and you don't care to speak, that's fine. I will recognize if you put, if you're in favor or against a certain thing, I will read that into the record.
Dr. Beebe?
Present.
Dr. Beebe is present. Ms. Vofe?
Here.
Ms. Vofe is present. Ms. Bradford?
Here.
Ms. Bradford is present. Mr. Garby?
Here.
Mr. Garby is present. Mr. Gyo? Mr. Gyo is not present. Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Hill is present. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee is not present. Dr. Maranti?
Present.
Dr. Maranti is present. Ms. Orange Jones?
Present.
Ms. Orange Jones is present. Mr. Romer?
Here.
Mr. Romer is present. Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Smith is present. You have a call.
Thank you. Thank you, members. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. I have a comment.
Yes, down to a second, please. And we have a second. Ms. Smith.
Just the record, I'd like to state this for the record, and I appreciate your comment earlier, Mr. President, but I was opposed to 3.3. I don't believe that we have the authority under this section to go into executive session, so I hope that we'll all remember that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other comments regarding the agenda? Dr. Beebe?
Yes. Mr. Romer, I do want to inform you of my dissatisfaction. As you are well aware, I feel that you denied three Bessie members their right to have added agenda items, and, you know, your response was somewhat general in that we have the right to discuss our concerns, but at the same time, you denied the constituents in District 3, District 8, and a member at large. And I just think that that is disrespectful to us as Bessie members, and you did shut out possibly participation by the decision you made. And I just wanted that to be reflected in the records as well.
Mr. Garby?
Yes. Are these speakers working?
Thanks.
Is this speaker working?
Did anybody ask to put something on the agenda that could not be covered by the items that are already on the agenda? No. And members, I don't want to really go through this ad nauseam. I made the judgment that the first item on the agenda was very broad, the same statement that I made to the crowd. If you look at the content of the executive orders and the suspension of the contract, that is very broad and allows for a lot of comment and motion. And I mentioned that to every member in the request, that their request could be covered under item one, and I'm not going to talk any further on that. Any other, any other items? Any other discussion on the agenda?
Yes, I do, Mr. Romer.
Yes, Ms. Hill.
I think for me, because I sent an email to you as well, the purpose of us wanting to have a special meeting is to identify a Plan B for our children, our districts, and our educators, because there's so much information out there where they don't know how to move forward. And so, that was the purpose. And when you look at the items that you have on the agenda, it doesn't talk about a Plan B or how are we going to move forward for the 2014-2015 school year. So, I just want to just make that clear of what the stance were when we decided to have these items placed on the agenda. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Any other items? Any other comments regarding the agenda? Any objection to the agenda? Hearing none, so moved.
Objection.
Objection.
Ms. Bradford. Two objections. Thank you, members. I'd like to start off before going to item 3.1 by once again thanking you for your patience. Over the last few weeks, we've been working on a plan in this state for a number of years to implement new standards and related testing. That debate was had thoroughly for a number of years in legislature and at this board. And there were actions taken that, at least temporarily, halted that. And that was not of our doing, and it is actually very complicated in terms of how do we unwind and determine what next steps to take. So, the actual purpose of the meeting, though broad, is to analyze what action has been taken in regard to the executive orders, what the implications are for this state and for the board, and what might be potential remedies in that regard. So, I appreciate your patience. I know last week, I will comment, we did work with the AG's office regarding the agenda, and every time we looked at it, we found ways to improve it. And so, I want everyone to know that. The first wording was probably not as clear as it should have been, and so, we did make those adjustments, and I think we made it better. So, I appreciate your patience as we work through that. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent White for item 3.1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, I'm going to make comments effectively trying to summarize the situation. And, Mr. Chairman, if you can give me a little bit of latitude, that is going to, I think, encapsulate everything that is an update on these two items. It might also stretch into concerns related to the other items. I mean, these items are so interconnected that this is going to be a broad summary of the situation, and I'm just going to leave it at that, if that works for the board. And I would agree.
If I can interrupt you real quick. We actually didn't get a motion to receive, some motion to receive right now, 3.1. Can I have a motion to do that? There's a motion by Ms. Orange Jones, second by Ms. Smith, to receive item 3.1. Mr. Superintendent, continue, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I am joined by our General Counsel, Joan Hunt, and by Chris Frouje, also an attorney here at the department. And we're really just here to walk through a summary of the situation and to provide facts, especially legal facts, in response to your questions or concerns. I do want to say this at the outset, that I'm sure many of the commenters, commenters from state government, commenters from various constituents, are going to address a wide range of concerns with you today. You're not going to hear from us a wide range of comments on the Common Core standards. You're not going to hear much about the PARC test specifically. You're not really going to hear anything about teaching and learning at all. Instead, what we're going to try to do is to identify what we think the executive orders referenced in item one have precipitated, which is, as Mr. Romer said, a confusing situation. And we're going to try to distill what we think is a very narrow question. It's a legal question. It's a confusing question. It's one to which we don't have an answer. And I think that's probably my best summary of the situation. We don't really have an answer, but it's to a legal question about government, about the operations of government. It's not a question about the validity of the Common Core standards or the PARC tests or anything like that. Now, I would say this. If this confusing legal question, and this gets to Ms. Hill's point a minute ago, if this confusing legal question is not resolved, at least in our opinion, we won't be able to proceed with a Plan A, a Plan B, a Plan C, or any other plan. In other words, we have legal questions in front of us that are confusing, and probably they'll be raised in various ways by a lot of other people. Without resolution to those questions, the executive orders promulgated by the governor have created a situation where we don't exactly know how to move forward with any plan, because effectively, we don't know who within government is the decision maker on a set of issues that, though they're not immediately classroom issues, they end up affecting the classroom. And so, my summary will be really about that confusing situation to which we have no clarity. That is a narrow legal question about government, not a question about the classroom or standards or tests or curriculum and so on. So, let me just provide some brief context, and then I'll talk about the specific issue at hand. You have a binder in front of you that has a set of source materials. It's this white binder. The binder refers to a set of documents that I will walk through as we go forward. And the first is the passage in the state constitution that gives, that creates this board and that gives this board the authorities it has to oversee and control the public school system. In light of that, the legislature then charges this board with doing particular things. In other words, your authority to be the body that oversees and controls the public school system is pursuant to laws that the legislature passes. That's how we get our instructions. The second item you have in that white binder is a law. It's the law that 17 years ago created what was called the Louisiana Education Assessment Program. It told Bessie, "You must go create a Louisiana Education Assessment Program." And Bessie immediately began developing the LEAP test and the GEE and the LA1 and the LA2 and other tests that were standardized tests. That is, was done because there is a law in place that says to Bessie, "You all have to do this. You're the body charged with overseeing it. You have to do it." In 2012, that law, as has happened many times, was amended. And so, you see in front of you today that amended law. And that law says that the standards that you choose and you approve, given your power to oversee and control the school system, have to be nationally recognized, and that the tests will be at a minimum comparable to national achievement tests and comparable from one state to the next. So, that was an instruction that you received, something that the board must do in light of its responsibility to oversee and control the schools. This session, there were a number of other bills to address that law. There were bills saying you can't choose specific tests. There were bills saying you have to choose new standards. There were many bills addressing this question of standards and this question of tests. Only one of them made it through the legislature, however. That was a bill that would have relaxed accountability over the course of two more years. That bill passed through the legislature and was then vetoed by the governor. So, you're the constitutionally charged body with overseeing the implementation of a set of laws that have not changed over the course of this last legislative session to implement tests. Now, getting to the specific situation at hand. Historically, not by law, but historically, given your prerogative to implement the Louisiana Education Assessment Program, you have approved contracts with testing service vendors. And I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that this fact has been broadly misunderstood. A testing service vendor does a lot of different things. Testing service vendor, yeah, creates test questions. It gets them together and makes them into a test, just like a teacher does. But it also distributes those tests. It trains teachers and administrators on how to administer the tests. It collects the tests. It scores the tests. It analyzes the tests. It ensures there's no cheating on the tests. It creates a public report on the test. It's a big, general contract that costs a lot of money every year. We have two contracts that provide testing services, all of those services I just discussed, in grades 3 through 8. One of them covers grades 4 through 8. That contract went through the competitive bidding process twice and then was granted a sole source contract, meaning it was not competitively bid the most recent time. Another contract, the tests in the other grades, was competitively bid twice and remains such. Both of those contracts are to deliver that full suite of testing services. In other words, those aren't just contracts to select questions and put them on a test. Those are contracts to do that, but also to drop the tests off, to pick them back up, to train people how to use them, to analyze for cheating, to report the test, to collect the test, distribute the test, all those things. Those contracts remain through June 30 of 2015. You've got another year on the contract to implement those testing services. Okay, so how does that come into all this for you? In 2010, and many of you were on Bessie at that time, most of you were not, but in 2010, Bessie, along with the governor, this governor, and along with the then superintendent, agreed that they would like to develop better tests, better tests than ones we have today. In part, that was to reintroduce writing back onto our tests. In part, it was for more independent thinking on our tests. In part, it was to create tests that were comparable from one state to the next. And so, Bessie joined with roughly 20 other states in an agreement to design a new test. That test was called, or the group is called, the Partnership for the Assessment and Readiness for College and Careers, or PARC, as it's come to know. Again, that process is one of designing a set of tests. Unlike what's been reported, it's not a contract. There was nothing bought. There was no procurement process done because no one was trying to buy anything. That was a decision for later. It's a design process. And so, over the course of the last four years, and we've reported on this occasionally to the board and to the legislature, those professionals on my team, teachers across the state, and you'll hear from some of them today, I'm sure, have gathered to design the test, not to buy the test. That decision is a decision for later. And that decision has to be made, this is an important point, has to be made by that agreement the governor signed in accordance with the state's procurement laws. It says that exactly in that agreement, and if you want to see it, that agreement is in your binder as well. It's in the PARC MOU. So, it was a design process, still going on. Nothing's been bought. No one sought to buy anything. There was no contract pursued. That's for later. So, what has that group produced? That group has produced, that PARC group, a set of ideas, a prototype, a model for what a good test could look like. Now, someone else can use that model. Last week or two weeks ago, the governor, who opposes this, said that he wanted to get out, and this is obviously not a secret, he's been saying this for some time, Louisiana from that test. Wants to remove us from that consortium. He sent a letter to that consortium saying he appreciated if Louisiana was no longer a part of it. Sent some letters to the National Governor Association and to the Council of Chief State School Officers, saying, "We're no longer using the Common Core standards." But probably more, at least more important in terms of its implications, get back to these contract questions and get back to that agreement to develop a test. The governor said that Bessie and the department should immediately issue a competitive bidding process for a new test. Now, mind you, we have contracts already in place, now they're coming up soon, but already in place for another year to implement tests. In light of that, these combined actions, the questions that are raised are, well, what contract are we using if the governor's saying we're supposed to use a new one? Can we ever use what PARC has developed, or are we no longer a part of that initiative? As I stated, the department already has contracts in place to do these things, and in response to the governor's orders, we informed the public of our intention. We haven't done anything on this front, but just our intention to use what we created with PARC, the test questions, as some of the test questions on next year's tests. Not all of the test questions, but some of the test questions on next year's test would be those developed by PARC. Now, remember, a testing services contract is one to deliver, create, distribute, collect, train, score, analyze for cheating, report publicly, all of those things. And what we said to the public is, what we plan on doing is just changing the test questions. Now, we change the test questions every year. Remember, never is the LEAP test, the same test from one year to the next. And very often, those LEAP tests, which you are charged with implementing in the law, are assembled from material that's been acquired from other sources. The department does not create all of those questions. Even the big vendor that does all of the distribution and all those things of the test doesn't create all of those test questions. So, what we proposed is essentially status quo. We propose that we're going to use our same contracts, we're going to adjust the test questions as we always do, and we're going to use some material from outside sources that we frankly have created, a lot of which we've created, in making up next year's test. But the group that implements next year's test and oversees it will be the exact same. In response, we were informed that the questions changing, or something to that effect, would precipitate the contracts being suspended. And so, we were informed by the administration that these contracts for these vendors, which have been approved through competitive bidding process, and in one case, a sole source, would be suspended because they were ostensibly out of scope with the contracts, even though before, on the same contracts, we changed the questions. Even though before, on the same contracts, we'd used material from outside vendors. So, you see where I'm going with this. Mr. Chairman and members, we're at just one of those times where there's a crossroads. It's not a crossroads about the Common Core standards. It's not a crossroads about PARC. The legislature and the Bessie Board under the Constitution make the rules to determine academic policy. That's not what this is about. This is about a governmental issue where finance and purchasing have collided with academic policy, and there's a question of who has the power to make a decision? Who has the power to determine what questions are on the test? Is it you and the legislature, which are charged for making academic policy under the Constitution and under the laws? Or is it the administration, which oversees the contracts that assist you in implementing those policies? Mr. Chairman and members, I'm not a lawyer, and even as we've discussed it with our lawyers, we don't have the end answer. But we know we've been dealing with this issue for some time, with various things being cast about in the papers. And in my view, if I were to summarize the situation in one sentence, it would be, regarding the governor's executive orders, we need clarity on how to proceed. You can call it Plan A. You can call it Plan B. You can call it Plan C. But when you don't know who's in the driver's seat of the plan, you have no plan at all. And if you want to go down the road of a Plan B or a Plan C, what I would tell you is if you don't resolve this confusion, we'll just be back here in two months with the same problem in front of you. I regret that that's the case. That's the very narrow issue on which we're focused here today. And so, my attorneys and I invite your questions and your comments. I know you're going to hear a lot of different perspectives about a lot of different stuff today, but if I were, Mr. Chairman, to summarize the executive orders, I would simply say, my team and I, in order to enact the will of the legislature and the Bessie Board, need greater clarity than we have today about who actually determines what's on our state's tests. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Superintendent. Members, comment. Mr. Garby?
Yes, a question for the Superintendent. Am I hearing you right that what we have here is a constitutional question, state constitutional question?
I'm a bureaucrat and not a lawyer, and I'm certainly not a constitutional lawyer, so I'm not in a position to say whether it's constitutional or not. But I would say this. As a, someone charged with executing the laws and the plans that you have given us, I look at the Constitution, I look at the laws, and I look at what has been handed to us in terms of executive orders, and I see great confusion among those three things. And I, our lawyers and I are unable to clarify that that situation in terms of a process ahead, no matter what plan you have.
Let me ask Ms. Hunt. It seems like there's constitutional law questions throughout this whole issue. Is that a fair statement?
I think that is a fair statement. I mean, there's a separation of powers possibly issue involved.
And would you say that you are a constitutional law expert?
I'm certainly familiar with Article 8 of our Louisiana Constitution.
But have you done?
But not beyond, not, I wouldn't hold myself out as a constitutional.
You think that there are other lawyers out there in private practice that have more experience in constitutional issues than you do?
I do.
And then people on your staff do?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have a different question, though, for the Superintendent. You said that not all of the questions that were planned for the 2014-15 test are planned to come from PARC, some of the test questions are going to come from someplace else? Did I understand that right?
Yes, sir.
Where would they come from?
Well, they would come from a vendor. We haven't planned which PARC, or excuse me, which assessments, assessment questions were going to be used on next year's test. Some of them will be questions that have been used in the past, some of them will not be. But for example, from a, for a history question or a social studies, excuse me, a science question, those obviously are not PARC questions. We didn't develop English, excuse me, we didn't develop social studies or sciences questions with PARC. So, certainly, a very large number of questions on next year's grade 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 tests will not be PARC.
Thank you.
Also, you know, just to say a couple of things. For English language learners, for example, the vendor that we use to implement tests has, for a long time, purchased those questions through an outside organization called ELDA. For those students, those questions will be purchased from somewhere else.
For ELA, second language learners, some of the ELA questions are not going to be PARC questions?
That's correct.
It was my impression that... It was my impression that all of the ELA questions were going to be Park questions.
This is a different test, different set of test questions for English language learners, students who are classified as being English language learners under federal law.
So we have a different test to fit a different situation is another way to describe that?
A different set of test questions, yeah.
How do, how do, how do you square that with the statement that this is a one-size-fits-all test? It seems like you're stating the opposite. If I'm understanding you right. Am I understanding you right in that respect?
That's true, and for students with significant cognitive disabilities, they have a different test as well. There are different tests for different segments.
It's the first time I'm hearing this. I thought that they were going to take the exact same questions under different circumstances, given more time, or given larger print, or something along those lines. I didn't know that they were getting different questions.
Certainly some of those students, for the most part, that will be the case for students with disabilities, but not for all.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Maranti, then Ms. Hill will be next.
Superintendent, I certainly agree that we need clarity on how we're going to proceed. Could you tell me what that process is going to entail?
I don't know. I do know that there are items further on the agenda where I believe the board will consider whether or not outside counsel should be a part of that process. But I will tell you that absent legal clarity on what I think has nothing to do with assessments or standards or anything like that, it is the intersection of, on one hand, finance and procurement, on the other hand, academic policy. We can't move ahead with any plan. You know, for example, if you were to discuss a different set of questions, as has been discussed, who would choose those questions? Under what contract? Who would create the RFP? Who would approve the RFP, given all of the situations that have been involved recently? It's clear that we have a roles and responsibilities confusion. I believe probably the Constitution plays a role in it. Certainly the laws instructing this board to do something have a role in it, but also oversight of the contracts have a role in it. So you've got multiple groups and the need, in our opinion, for some sorting out of whose role and responsibility it is to make which decision. That's all that we need is clarity. And whether we get it, it's not about a win or a loss, it's just about getting clarity. We will proceed with the appropriate legal course of action.
Ms. Hill, then Ms. Smith.
Okay, Superintendent White, I have a couple of questions. The first question is, what would prevent us as a board to approve the current 2013-2014, the test that was administered this year, to allow the districts to administer the test for the upcoming year? What would prevent us from not, what would prevent us to not allow that to go forward?
I think three things. First, the test questions that were used on last year's test have been publicly shared already. In other words, those are posted publicly, they're being studied, I would imagine, therefore, you'd be administering a test for significant consequences and measurement that everyone has seen already. Secondly, the law calls for a test that specifically measures nationally-recognized standards and is comparable. We don't believe that last year's test fully meets that bar. Even if you could implement it, we don't believe it meets that bar. So you'd have to develop new test questions. And as we said in the legislature, that would cost, we believe, upwards of $3 million for these grade levels alone, for this year alone. And second, it would delay the process by months so that you'd be able only to give teachers a guide as to what's going to be on the test, say, a couple of months before the test was taken. This year, we gave that test last, we gave that guide last winter. Think about that. We gave the guide to teachers, and we do this every year, for the test 15 months in advance. That's out the door, not at the last minute. So I think it's three things. One, it's technically impossible because those questions have already been shared with the public. Two, it's prohibited, we think, by the letter of the law, which instructs you to have a test purely based on nationally-recognized standards and comparable from one place to the next. And third, if you were to try to create new test questions, it would be cost prohibitive and the timing would be problematic.
My next question, to my understanding, speaking for myself as a board member, I was under the impression that the test that was administered this year was going to be aligned with the Common Core standards, that it was going to be modified. And so the test that the students had taken this year, that we had modified the LEAP and ILEAP to align with the Common Core standards. That's why we decided as districts to come up with the plan to not allow districts to see a significant decrease in achievement, and if they had an increase. So help me understand, because that was my impression of the test for this 2013-2014 school year.
Well, remember, we did our best with the content that we had. We couldn't invent an entirely new test, so we selected a lot of old questions that used to be on the LEAP, that were aligned with the Common Core standards or close to align with the Common Core standards. But the test questions that we developed through the Park process took us four years to develop, hundreds of educators vetting over and over and over again for alignment. So yes, I think the test this year was, for the most part, aligned, but not fully aligned. Second, when a student gets basic in Louisiana, it's not like we can turn around and just say, well, now we know how well that student would have done in other places. The law very explicitly says that beginning this year, it shall be based on standards that are nationally-recognized and are comparable from one place to the next. So we don't think that what you're proposing meets the letter of the law, even if it were technically possible, which it's not, because those tests, those questions have already been released to the public.
Okay, my final question, according to the Division of Administration, they have suspended all contracts concerning Park. What would prevent us as a board to look at other vendors to come in for the upcoming school year? Because my concern is, what are the schools, the districts, the students and educators? Schools start within six, seven weeks. So we need to identify what, how we're going to move forward for the upcoming school year. So if the Division of Administration have suspended contracts surrounding Park, what would prevent us, maybe this is Joan Hunt's question, I don't know, prevent us from seeking and looking for other vendors that can't come in to move forward for this school year?
I'd say two things. Number one, we need to think about the material realities of what that would do to our school system, first and foremost. Second, I'd like to talk a little bit about the issue of clarity and confusion in this process. First, it's going to take months to arrive at a new contract, many months to arrive at a new contract. Now, I'm thrilled to see the Commissioner and her staff are here. They could certainly speak to the length of time that that process has to take, but it takes months. It takes months to get the contract. Then you have to actually field test the questions, meaning you have to give them to see how well kids actually do on them. That takes a while. Then you analyze how well those questions would be done on a test, or how well our kids did on the test. Then you put them on a test and figure out how to score them. Then, once you've assembled that, you communicate to the teachers, this is what the test's going to look like. Then you train the teachers. So you're talking about an RFP process, the bids, the awarding process and the scoring, the field testing, the developing of the questions, the scoring of the questions, the creation of the test, communicating and training the teachers, and then finally putting it out. That doesn't strike me as a recipe for success for teachers. We already have a contract in place. That contract is up June 30 of 2015, and of course, members, we will abide by all state procurement laws in procuring the next contract, as we have done in the past rounds of this contract. Second, I believe, Ms. Hill, if we were to go for a new contract, we would end up in exactly the same meeting, having the exact same discussion about clarity and confusion of governmental roles that we're having today, except we'd be two months from now. We'd be in a discussion about who gets to determine what's on the RFP, about the scoring process for the RFP, about the awarding of the contract, about whether that can include Common Core content or not. We have a situation where there's just simply, obviously, a disagreement. And unfortunately, given that we have two very significant branches or parts of government, essentially on a collision course, we need resolution. That collision is not just related to this issue, it's related to all similar procurement of education testing issues, unless we resolve this currently. Now, if we do, remember what we'll have. We'll have clarity going forward. We won't have to be back in this constant debate every day, back and forth in the papers about, is it this branch? Is it that branch? Is it this office? Is it that office that gets to make the call? We need to be told what our role is and what the role of other elements within government is.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to have a motion that I think will help clarify for our school districts. I respectfully disagree that we can't use what we have used this past year. I'll just say, prove it to me. I think we can. I think we can give school systems clarity, a calmness about when they start school within a month or so, if we just continue with the LEAP and ILEAP that we had in place last year. We move forward with that while we make the decision with what we're going to do, whether it be develop standards in this state, which that's what I would like to see happen. But meanwhile, whether you like Park, whether you don't like it, is not the issue on this particular question. I have a motion that just simply says we would move into the 2013-14 assessment, use those instruments, and continue to use those in the 2014-15, while whatever happens, happens. And, you know, that's, I think that's what I would like to see for all of our school districts. You can debate about whether we gave out all the questions, I want to know who got them. I'd like to see an audit of that. I want to know who got them. And also, let me finish.
Audience, I'm going to ask you, we're not going to be clapping and yelling today. Okay? We've got a long day and a lot of speakers, and we're going to respect you speaking and we're going to respect board members, okay? I'm going to ask you to refrain, please, on either side. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we need to look at and examine who got those test questions. I think there needs to be an audit of that. I also would like to raise the question, if you really think a fourth grader memorized the questions and went out and told his little brother? I just think that this is convoluted. I think there's a way to settle this today, and at appropriate time, I'm going to have a motion, Mr. President.
Ms. Beebe, Dr. Beebe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roma. Superintendent White, help me understand, the agenda item deals with the executive order issued by Governor Gendel. And so, as it referenced, I mean, as the executive order, as I understood the governor to articulate, the concern is, the rationale he offered, rather, was he wanted to protect Bessie from not following the department, not following or adhering to proper procurement laws. So with that said, I know you made reference to the contracts, so are you saying that all contracts that we have in place, that you will give 100% assurance that proper procurement procedures were followed? Because I think this is the issue at hand, and I think this is the concern the governor has as it relates to the Park assessment.
Yes. So the answer to your question is yes, and I'll elaborate. And I just want to restate the history on this because it has been, this is obviously hard to keep track of and so on. There are two contracts in question. Both have been awarded to a vendor twice, the same vendor, through a competitive bidding process that-
Could you name that?
Data Recognition Corporation.
Data Recognition, okay.
Yes, DRC.
DRC.
They have operated the LEAP on behalf of this board for the last 15 years, the three-through-eight testing. Now, in 2011, when the first contract of the two came up for reconsideration, it was given a sole source contract, essentially because there was not another service provider that had a comparable capacity to provide it. Now, in 2010, the board approved joining, or the board president, the Park Consortium to develop a test. The board president signed it, the state superintendent signed it, the governor signed it, and the head of the Office of Purchasing signed it. Now, in that memorandum was no commitment, there was not a commitment to buying anything. There was not a commitment to having to purchase anything. In fact, the memorandum says, "All purchasing shall be done through the standard budgetary and administrative procedures of a given state." It actually contained language that says, "You can't break your procurement laws. You have to abide by your procurement laws." And the governor, and the state superintendent, and the board president, and the head of purchasing signed it. The governor, in discussing his executive order, stated that Park breaks procurement law. I'm not an attorney and don't have the capacity to interpret that, but I take that the administration had concerns with our entering into a contractual agreement with Park. There has been no attempt to enter into a contractual agreement with Park. There has been no negotiations with Park. Park is not a testing services vendor. We have contracts signed off on by the administration and this board that are testing services contracts through the end of 2015. Now, in response to us asserting that, the administration suspended, and then, as you noted, has recently, since then, only partially suspended activities on the test that they consider to be out of scope, and they can certainly speak to that question. But those two contracts were bid originally, one of them was recently sole sourced, and they're active. They're active through 2015, having all been signed off on by the administration. Now, you will hear, I'm sure, from others, facts that they would say, support our proposal, which is just that at this time, just a proposal, to use Park content in the DRC contract, they will say that that is wrong or illegal. That's exactly why I'm suggesting we seek legal clarity. I'm not necessarily even saying that they're wrong. I'm simply saying that there is clearly a hang-up and that we need clarity to help us get beyond it. Because what is currently the case, Dr. Beebe, is that activity for next year has been suspended by the administration, and we would need clarity in order to proceed.
Okay, but with that comment, so what happens with that clarity? If we're ruled, or your thought is incorrect, then what does that do for school systems? I mean, it's almost essential that we, it's imperative that we have a Plan B, and I want to know, as the state superintendent of education, have you given thought to a Plan B?
I absolutely have given thought to a Plan B, but I've arrived at the conclusion that there is no better or faster plan than Plan A.
But in the, I mean, again, Ms. Hill alluded to it, in five weeks or so, school districts, school systems will be starting. And so they need, I mean, we need a definitive response to give our educators, because last year, I can speak, I'm in the trenches, there was a lot, I mean, it was overwhelming for our educators. And, you know, and we talk about Park. Park is a consortium. I think, you know, when we talk about contracts, while we might have the relationship with Park, the Pearson is the big test company, am I correct?
Pearson is a company that in one state has received a contract to implement a testing service based on the Park questions. If we were to pursue a testing contract, when our testing contract is up, they may be a bidder on that contract. I don't know, but we have not solicited services from any of the people that you're describing.
Okay, because I do know, I'm sure you're aware, that Park right now, well, Pearson and the American Institute of Research, they're already embroiled in some litigation. So again, as our educators, I mean, I know from day one, we've always talked or spoke about Park-like items. So, you know, Ms. Hill referenced that in her comments. I think Mr. Garvey also alluded to it. We thought the items were aligned to Park. And then I will say, you know, out of concern for educators, many took, I mean, they didn't, they weren't presented a curriculum. I mean, they, we had to write curriculums, we had to do the common assessments, we had to make them Park-aligned. And I do realize there are many talented educators within Louisiana- are many talented educators within Louisiana. So, in the event that you have to have a Plan B, I would strongly suggest that you ask those educators to come to the table and to share their knowledge and expertise.
If I may, if I may just respond, because you did leave it open to me to think about a Plan B. Just a couple of thoughts. I agree with you about the urgency of the situation. Prior to the executive orders, I urged our legislature, I urged you, and I urged the administration to please not put the education system in a position where its decision-making was on a different timeline from that of classroom educators. Classroom educators, as you well know, they don't plan for next year, starting in August. They plan for next year, starting in the winter of the year previous.
Exactly.
That's why everything our department did and you did was on that timeline. We put out the guidance, we put out the curriculum, we put out the standards, we did the training, all on a normal timeline. No one here precipitated this circumstance in which we find ourselves. I would never advise you to take a less expedient course of action. Seeking clarity is the most expedient, because either an entirely new RFP and test development process will not put our teachers in a position for this year, clearly when the contracts are up, we need to do that, but for this year, will not put them in a position of success. And secondly, because I think it will just continue to surface these questions of, well, who actually makes the call? Thus, I think it will cause more confusion. The best plan is a plan to seek clarity and to move ahead with whatever instruction we are given.
And just to piggyback what Ms. Smith said about the test items, that you have disseminated those items. Well, I'm a district superintendent, Superintendent White, I spoke to my accountability person a couple of days ago, and she has no idea where those test items are. So, again, when we've talked about effective communication, I would have to remind you that many of us in the trenches, we don't receive the correspondence.
Well, I can just tell you, it's on LouisianaBelieves.com. If you just go to the library, it's under assessment.
But was that communicated?
It was, ma'am. Yes, it was in the newsletter. Yes, ma'am, it was. It was in the newsletter.
Thank you. Dr. Beebe, are you?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey, did you have a comment?
Yes.
And members, I'm going to say this. This is, this is Mr. Garvey's second time to speak. I'm not going to hold it strictly to twice, because I know it's a complicated issue, but I want you, I would like us to be mindful of trying to ask your questions that you have, and let's not jump in every time something comes to your mind. So, Mr. Garvey, proceed.
Yes. I want to see if I understand this right, and this is maybe playing devil's advocate to a little bit, or to a small extent. Is one of the questions that we need to get clarity on, the question involving the scenario that you described a few minutes ago, which was that we are in a sole-source contract, or we are operating under a sole-source contract with DCR right now, is that right?
In one of two contracts, yes.
We have two existing contracts with DCR?
Yes, DRC, yes, sir.
DRC. Okay, I thought there was only one. I thought the second one had expired, and that the only one was now, and it's set to expire at the end of 15.
There are two contracts, both expire at the end of the 14-15 school year.
Not at the end of 2015, but at the end of the school year?
Yes, sir.
Which is earlier than December 31st.
At the end of fiscal year also.
Okay. One of the contracts is a sole-source contract.
It had been competitively bid twice before, and then awarded to DRC on a sole-source basis three years ago.
Okay. Under that sole-source contract, DRC subbed out, subcontracted out, the writing of some of the questions, if I understand it right?
I believe that is correct. Yes, yes.
And-
Yes, it is.
There is some claims now that because it was done in the past, it ought to be okay to do it in the future with PARK. Is that a fair description of what some people are saying?
I think it's fair to say that we believe that the contractor, identifying the appropriate instructional materials and trying to meet the objectives of the contract, has been in the past and remains fully within the scope of the contract. But I want to say that there are those, and I respect this opinion, who disagree with that. I'm sure their concerns will be heard today. Absent resolution on that question, which I think has broader implications for who gets to choose the tests, the questions on a test in the first place, we don't have resolution. And if you don't resolve the broader question of who gets to choose, is it that who regulates the contract, or is it that who regulates the education system, you don't have clarity. And I think that is a respectful and legitimate disagreement, where there just simply needs to be clarity.
Well, and that was one of the issues I wanted to point out, is that just because we did it in the past, doesn't mean it was legal, doesn't mean it wasn't legal, to sub out the contracts. Just because we had DRC do it in the past, doesn't mean it's, it was okay. And that is one of the questions that we need to get clarity on.
I think that's fair. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Members, I'm going to go to public comment. Appreciate your remarks, Superintendent. I'm sure there may be additional follow-up. If you do have additional follow-up, let me know, and I'll ask the superintendent to come back to the table. I will remind the audience, again, we have a large number of comments. If you're representing a group, I will give you three minutes. I need you to know, state that group, and that group needs to have more than one member here. Or, I'm going to limit you to one minute. And I will give you some leeway and try to be gracious, but I ask that you respect when I kind of give you the time warning, that you follow that. I would like to invite Kristi Nichols from the Division of Administration. Ms. Nichols, I'm going to give you the benefit of the doubt that you represent more than yourself, and so I'll give you at least three minutes.
Good morning, members. My name is Kristi Nichols. Good morning, members. Good morning, members. Kristi Nichols with the Division of Administration. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to just be clear about my role in being here today and the obligation that I have to be here as the Commissioner of Administration and also as the administrator of the state's contractual office. I come here really as an advisor to Bessie and as an advisor to the superintendent and the Department of Education purely around the laws that govern state procurement. And that is the expertise, and that is the statutory authority that I have been granted as the Commissioner of Administration, for which oversees both Bessie's procurement as well as the Division of Administration, I'm sorry, the Division, the Department of Education's procurement. So, it's very clear that as it relates to procurement and state contracts and all other purchasing matters, that discretion falls solely within both the Division of Administration, certainly, and the legislature and the Constitution. And so, I come to you with that. Obviously, you know that pursuant to the executive order that was issued in June, the Division was asked to conduct a full review of all purchases and activities as it relates to PARK, and specifically to review prior procurement as it relates to testing assessments for the state. So, we've undergone that assessment and that review, and have been in communication with the department over the last few weeks to try and ascertain some documentation and answers to questions as it relates to the direction from the executive order. I also want to mention that irrespective of that executive order, the Division has always had, and the Commissioner has always maintained, the authority to audit state contracts. The Commissioner of Administration under the statute serves as essentially the chief accountant for the state and oversees all of the procurement laws related to the state. Specifically, as referenced in Statute 39334, the Commissioner of Administration shall be general accountant of the state and keeper of all accounts, books, and records, including contracts, and relative to its revenue, debt, and fiscal affairs, effectively mandating me the responsibility to ensure that the state's accounting efforts, and including its contracting efforts, are done so in accordance within the law and the Constitution. So, and I just make mention of that, and in addition to that, it gives me auditing rights as it relates to those documents. And I make mention of that because I really think it's important that irrespective of the executive order, Bessie and the Department of Education should be concerned and should have been concerned always about the future testing contractual arrangements, and how to properly follow state procurement laws in proceeding with not only the 2015 contract year, but prior years and years past that point. And it's something that even if the executive order had not mandated the review, really, it was incumbent upon the department and Bessie to come to the Division to ensure that their existing procurement mechanisms met state law standards for future testing. I think it's always incumbent upon us as administrators to do due diligence and to fully review our own authority and the authority of other branches of government and other state agencies before we proceed in large endeavors going forward. We have been looking at sort of the evolution of this contractual relationship. And again, I'm here solely to talk about that relationship. The superintendent was absolutely correct in that there are several mechanisms that have been in play or are in place today that reference testing for the state, and that do give the department the right to procure testing and administer testing services. So, our responsibility has been to review those mechanisms, really, one, to determine, is a new process required to execute Common Core testing going forward? And then, as a result of that question, to look at all of the ways that the department has procured testing services, especially services or contracts that they say can be used to execute Common Core testing in the future, to ensure that that particular mechanism would meet state law requirements going forward for Common Core testing, and to ensure, as a subsequent event, that those contracts were properly procured and that subsequent services-
Ms. Nichols, if I may ask, are you aware, in that contract that exists, that outside questions have been used in the past?
Sure. And I'm going to go over the timeline on those contracts and the scope of those contracts.
Did you approve those contracts?
Absolutely. Well, I'm sorry, the Division of, and let me clarify one thing as well. The Commissioner of Administration is given the authority to audit and oversee accounts and records and contracts. OCR is given the authority to approve those contracts. My authority, my authority as the commissioner-
Is it your authority to determine the questions?
My authority as the commissioner is to review not only the agency, but also the Office of Contractual Review's execution of state contracts.
I understand that, and I appreciate it. Is it your authority to determine the questions of the test?
Absolutely not, unless it's within the scope of the contract. It's my authority to determine if any activity within a contract is within the existing scope.
Thank you.
And so, as it relates to the contracts that are in play, and this dates back, and there were prior contracts, I think they've been mentioned. This dates back to 2003. And I think it's important for the public to understand, we're talking about the procurement of almost $200 million worth of services. State law and procurement law is designed to protect the state. It is designed to create a competitive process that drives pricing down and that gets good quality. When you look at contracts that are in excess of hundreds of millions of dollars, there is no amount of due diligence that you shouldn't go through to ensure that you've competitively bid appropriately.
Ms. Nichols, do you believe you can have a fair procurement process if you exclude certain questions from being considered?
I don't know that that's a question for the procurement office to answer. The question is, how was the RFP written? Was it competitively bid?
I'm asking a question. Do you believe it's a fair competitive process when the executive branch has declared certain questions will not be considered?
I'm not educated enough as to whether or not to make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
What I am educated enough to make a determination on is do the current contracts within the Department of Education.
I appreciate that distinction.
Cover the future questions in their current scope of contract. That's my only expertise and my only reason for being here.
I appreciate it.
So, and again, to advise the board legally what state law requires.
Thank you.
So, in 2003, the superintendent mentioned they did execute an RFP for services for testing service. That original contract was from 2003 to 2008. That contract was subsequently amended 12 times, I'm sorry. Yes, 12 times, and they do cover through the 2015 school year. Now, remember-
Those amendments were approved?
There, yes, absolutely. Those are 12 contract amendments through OCR. Now, remember, the Commissioner's authority legally supersedes OCR's authority. My job is to make sure not only did the department do their job, but did OCR do their job. And I think that's really important for Bessie to understand from a legal obligation. It doesn't matter, and I think the point was made, it doesn't matter if things were improperly done or inappropriately done in the past. The question is, can we legally do them?
May I ask you one other question? If there's a disagreement with the process that you just outlined, and the decisions that are being made, do you believe this board should seek clarity?
I think you should, absolutely. You should, you should fully get legal clarity, both from the state's procurement office, the Commissioner of Administration, and by whatever means that you need to, to make sure you're acting under state law.
If there is a disagreement between the various groups that you've mentioned, including Bessie and the Department of Ed, do you think Bessie should seek clarity from a court?
I think that state law gives the Commissioner of Administration the responsibility to give you clarity on contracting questions.
And, Mr. Roma, if I'm in order, you are the chair, and I would like for the young lady to present, and then we can have an opportunity to ask questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So, just to cut-
Excuse me, just a minute. Point of order. In the executive order, this can be for the president or the commissioner, there was no ruling out of any questions. There was no ruling of any, out of any questions.
We'll get to that. Continue.
Thank you.
But again, in terms of the contracts that are currently in play, it was referenced the MOU. The MOU was executed in 2010. And I'm just delineating mechanisms that were in play or are in play today that could be conceived to be utilized as a proper procurement venue. I want to tell the board that the Department of Education has never requested guidance from the Division as to future procurement activities related to Common Core. So, I'm only responding to a letter that was sent to the department yesterday and public comments. I was not a party to any of these discussions prior to the superintendent making known publicly that he intended to use DRC as their future contracting entity. Our guidance has never been sought. In 2003, an RFP was initiated, and DRC was the bidder and awardee, and I'll go quickly.
Thank you.
Awardee of those services. In that contract and in the scope of the contract, it specifically says that the contractor will develop and implement augmented norm reference tests in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics, and criterion reference tests in Science and Social Studies from grades three, five, six, and nine, and that contract went through '08. It was subsequently amended, as I mentioned, 12 times. In, and I think this is extremely important for you to know as a board, when the Division of Administration and OCR review a contract and its subsequent amendments, we are obligated to review it against the original RFP. The RFP sets forward essentially the parameters for which the scope of service applies. So, when we process an amendment, we're not just looking at the amendment as it relates to the contract. What we have to assure is that the amendment does not exceed the request for proposals and activities that were in the original RFP. And the reason for that is because all vendors that participated in that bidding process had to be given the opportunity to bid on all of the services that would be rendered in that contract or its subsequent amendments. So, if you tack on an amendment later, and it exceeds the scope that was originally dictated by the RFP, you are in violation of procurement laws. And that is designed to create competitive bidding that is fair to all vendors, not just the vendor under contract. And in that particular proposal, in meeting the RFP guidelines, DRC did reference that it would be contracting with both Riverside, or participating with both Riverside and Pacific Metrics in developing the assessment frameworks for the Iowa Test. That was the scope of the contract. It was amended eight times, and that, those first eight amendments were effectively price amendments. Then, it proceeded through amendments nine and going forward to then evolve into the transitional process leading up to Common Core. That's effectively my summation of what those amendments included. Did it extend to 2015? Yes. But in no amendment did it specifically reference that DRC would be conducting Common Core testing in 2015. That was not the scope of the original RFP, and that was not the scope of the contract. So, this is the contract, based on the letter that I received from the superintendent yesterday, that I believe he is intending to utilize- that I believe he is intending to utilize as the effective instrument for 2015 testing because as he asserts, the contract all along, and I would say not all along, but since amendment number nine, has been used to evolve into Common Core testing. It was not used specifically even in the amendments to conduct the Common Core test. It was specifically referencing LEAP, ILEAP, and transitional tests. Transitional tests by definition are getting you to the Common Core assessment. And that is the review that OCR and the Division has to conduct to determine whether an existing contract amendment or a future amendment is required to proceed into the 2015 year, and we have to be given the opportunity to make that decision. And I would just ask the question to the superintendent, why we're having this discussion now? He's right, speed is an issue. We all know in state government that RFP and competitive processes take time. And if you're leading up to a 2015 school year into a major transition and implementation of new testing with new testing questions, why wouldn't we be involved in due diligence and planning in the winter of last year?
May I ask one last question?
Yes.
I appreciate your comments very much. Were you aware that Common Core questions were being placed on the test prior to this discussion?
The contracts specifically stipulate that both the 2003 contract and the sole source contract that's in play today through DRC are transitioning the test questions to fully prepare students for Common Core.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just say that there is another contract that is in play. We referenced a letter, it has been referenced. That contract was executed in 2011. I think it's important, so you have the 2003 contract that was competitively bid for prior testing, and it was amended. Then you have a contract that was competitively bid in 2005 for DRC, effectively for LEAP and ILEAP. That contract expired in 2011, and the department requested a sole source contract for the next three years to transition to Common Core. And they justified it by saying that we only have three years left with DRC, and at which time we have to proceed into Common Core, we'll go through a new procurement process. I have an email from the department that specifically justifies the sole source contract and the justification that the department put forward in 2010 for the sole source contract, effectively saying, we only need this contract for the next three years because in the 2015 school year, we will have to go through a new procurement process for the Common Core test.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Smith.
So in trying to, once again, I know this is not why you're here, but one of the reasons that I'm here is we're trying to figure out a way to start the school year with some clarity and some cohesion and a sense of, we're going to go in there and we're going to pick up and start teaching and doing what we did last year. The way the contract reads now or the lack thereof, would we be able to use LEAP and ILEAP, in your opinion, as was last year and move forward with that?
The sole source contract extends through 2015 and does provide, obviously for transitional testing, LEAP and ILEAP. So what we need to review within OCR if that contract does allow you to continue through 2015 for those contracts, I mean for those testing services.
Again, I'm going to have that motion at the appropriate time, Mr. President.
Sure.
I do want to say, though, that one concern about that sole source contract, and it's something that you should review as well, is that while it was approved as a sole source contract, the justification that there's only three years left before Common Core and they need time with the current vendor to complete the process for transition isn't justification enough for sole source. And so it begs the question, both in the 2003 contract that's in play, have all of the amendments been properly executed? And in the sole source contract, was it properly executed? And that's why I can't answer the question directly as to whether or not the 2015 school year would provide for that test. It does appear to be within the scope, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moe.
So here on the side, so you said that there's a sole source contract that runs through the end of the fiscal year in 2015, and that was approved three years ago. But you're telling us now that there wasn't the justification to do that sole source contract.
Saying it definitely needs to be reviewed.
But it was approved three years ago.
But as the Division of Administration, Commissioner of Administration, I need to make full assurance to the state that we've all followed state procurement laws, including both OCR and the agency.
Was it not reviewed when it was passed three years ago?
Yes, but it was also, you have to realize it's incumbent upon the agency to produce all documents that are necessary and to attest that sole source is justified. And to the extent that the department didn't fully produce all records or information that would show that sole source was not justified, it's incumbent upon the agency.
And I'd like for you to restate what you told Ms. Smith, because there was something that you said, and then you said it right after, and it sounded different. So I want to understand your response to her question. We might have to get her to re-ask the question, I'm not sure.
She asked if the 2011 sole source contract could be used to continue LEAP and ILEAP. I would suggest to you, we need to review that closely together. We need to be asked formally how that would be done. The current scope of that contract is pretty clear, though, that it does cover LEAP, ILEAP, and transitional testing, and it does go through 2015.
In your mind, what does it mean to ask something formally?
That you would seek guidance from the Office of Contractual Review as to whether your current contracts covers a scope of service. Usually it's by form of amendment, quite frankly, but to the extent that the department asserts that they don't need an amendment, they would seek clarification to ensure that their current contract approval would be in the scope. It could be a letter, it could be a letter from Bessie, it could be a letter from the superintendent.
Directed to you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Or the Director of OCR.
Is it possible, any other questions?
Thank you, I appreciate your testimony. Mr. Roman?
Yes, I do have a question, I just haven't figured out how to phrase it yet. It's not surprising, Ms. Garvey. We have a competitive bid contract in place. Are you saying you're not sure if that contract that is in place now that was used for this past year was used properly? And that you need to review it to see if this past year's process was used properly?
We're taking a look at the 2003 contract and all of its subsequent amendments to ensure that all of the amendments and all of the invoicing and practices used by the Department of Education are in line with procurement laws. And we would reference that against the existing RFP and contract. So that's under review, and the same review is in play with the 2011 sole source contract.
So you're checking to see if the 2011 sole source contract has been used properly?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? And how long would it take you to determine whether it was used properly in the past?
We sought information from the Division, sorry, from the department and also DRC on all of their invoices and expenditures. For the sole source contract specifically, if other vendors were used to procure testing services, it would beg the question why that was deemed a sole source contract, among other things. If you're using other testing vendors within the scope of that sole source, then it wasn't a sole source because there are multiple vendors that can provide that service. And I don't have any records, and we have not seen records related to subcontractor use.
But if the services, there's a main contract that provides multiple services, and another vendor simply providing the questions for that service, they're not providing all the other services. They're providing questions to a contract just as they've done in the past. Is that not accurate?
Well, in the 2003 contract, as I read the contract, and we need to go through the RFP and all of the contract provisions, but the subcontractors that were listed or the partnering vendors were Riverside and Pacific Metrix.
And now you suspended a contract specifying a certain vendor being ineligible, is that correct?
No.
It's not correct, okay, thank you.
Ms. Garvey, I apologize if I didn't hear...
No, it's really, I mean, state procurement laws are difficult to get through.
How long do you think it's going to take you to determine whether or not the sole source contract has been used properly in the past?
Again, it depends on the speed with which the department produces the records that have been requested.
Let's assume that they produce them properly.
I don't think it would take long if we had all expenditures and voices...
And I'm not expecting an exact time, but are we talking about weeks, months, days, you know, somewhere in that kind of a range?
I think it would be reasonable to expect weeks.
One more, oh, sorry, Ms. Garvey. If it was used properly in the past, do you, are you thinking that maybe it would, even if it was used properly in the past, it could not be used properly to purchase PARC questions or to implement PARC questions?
Yeah, and that's the primary question we've started with. Is a competitive process for the 2015 school year required? That's the first question. Does an instrument exist that allows you to proceed with Common Core testing? And then what vendor would be utilized under what mechanism? Again, the superintendent has indicated to us that he is looking to utilize not the sole source contract, but the 2003 contract that has a series of amendments.
I thought it was the sole source contract that was planned to be used.
And again, he's never directly asked us for our guidance, but I can only surmise by the letter that I just received from him, which basically says, "We've prepared the attached report to respond to your inquiries regarding PARC. However, for the 2014-2015 school year, until its current testing services contracts come to a conclusion, the state intends a course of action consistent with past years, a cost no greater than in past years, and no additional testing services contracts." When I read that paragraph, and I certainly would ask the superintendent to clarify, it appears to me, based on my review of all of the contracts that are in place, that he's referring to the 2003 contract and that he intends to use that as the mechanism for the extension. And I think because in my read of the sole source contract, number one, you couldn't subcontract with vendors who would have qualified as a competitive vendor in a sole source contract. So that would clearly seem to indicate that the sole source wasn't appropriate or couldn't be used for that amendment.
And that goes to my next question. With a sole source contract, is the company producing the services, are they allowed to subcontract out things in general? Are they prohibited from ever subcontracting out anything?
No, the two issues, if they were to subcontract, well, first of all, let me say this, typically, the contract itself stipulates the use of subcontracting to perform critical services. We would expect, when you're proposing to the department, if you're going to subcontract out for services relating to testing, because remember, the DRC sole contract, sole source contract, is strictly related to DRC developing the tests and executing and implementing the testing. So that says that DRC is the vendor. To the extent that they're utilizing other vendors to perform similar services, you would certainly have to stipulate that in your request to the division. And if you fail to do so, it's your obligation to do so.
Members, if I may, what's clear to me is that it's not clear, okay? And I'd like to move on to allow the audience, because there's a lot of them here that want to give input. I appreciate your testimony, and...
And one last comment, to the extent that Bessie makes a determination of the 2015 school year, I would just advise the board that it is absolutely imperative that you seek guidance from the division as to that mechanism. Because we do have the authority to suspend whatever mechanism you use in the event that we deem that it is in violation of the current process.
What if we think the division is biased?
I think that the division is looking to see if the department intends to circumvent state procurement laws, and that's our job.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to move on to the audience.
You have another question, sir? Mr. Roman.
I'd like, we've got 123 cards here, and I'd like to give them each one minute.
Well, I need clarification.
Yes, Dr. Bead, please.
Okay, and I don't know if the question should be directed to Mr. White, but I'm trying to understand, understand the data recognition corporation. Just this past, in June, we approved a contract, and it addressed LEAP items, so Superintendent White, did that, did we follow proper procurement in that instance with the data recognition pool?
We did. As I indicated before, the questions change on the test every year, and sometimes the cost of the contract changes because we need to develop new questions. Many questions on the LEAP test next year will not be PARC questions, to Mr. Garvey's point, they'll be questions developed by DRC or another vendor. So that's, you approved that amendment to the contract for that specific reason.
Okay, but with that said, the two consortia, Smarter Balance and PARC, it's my understanding that the PARC states would enlist Pearson, and Pearson would develop those test items. So, I mean, we've put a lot of emphasis on PARC-like test items so that our children can experience success. So, I mean, this is somewhat confusing to me when...
I agree.
Where is the continuity across states? I mean, we're talking Common Core, you know, regardless of the child's zip code, we're administering tests, and so their performance, I mean, you would think there would be similar items, and then, so am I understanding you to say that we can get test items from all over the place and not necessarily be, allow Pearson to be the vendor of choice?
That's correct. In other words, Pearson, and I drew this distinction before, among other things they do, they are, at least in the New Mexico instance, they are a comprehensive testing services vendor. They do a full continuum of things, and the same is true of DRC. Now, they won the contract in New Mexico, and it is true that the governor and the superintendent and the head of purchasing and the board president signed an MOU years ago saying that the state of Louisiana could use that purchasing process to buy those services. Now, we're not doing that. Right now, we have testing services contracts already in place. All that we are suggesting, and I don't think there's any disagreement about this, is that we should be able, because of the policies of this board and the policies of the legislature, to include that content on our tests. Now, Ms. Nichols is raising concerns that that violates the contracting procedures set forth in the law. In other words, there's education policy, I said this at the outset, that necessitates certain things be done. There is procurement policy that necessitates certain things be done. I'm actually not here to suggest that one is right or the other. I'm simply here to suggest that there appears to be an impasse, and here's why I believe it is irreconcilable by way of just negotiation, which may be a slight disagreement with Ms. Nichols' approach. The administration is on the record as saying they are opposed to the policies that were commenced by this board. As recent as two weeks ago, the administration made very aggressive statements about those policies and wanting not just to cancel those tests, but also cancel the standards on which those tests are based. Members, I say that not to indict or say any criticism of that position, but just to say that asking for reconciliation by coming to the very people who oppose your fundamental position is not a recipe for clarity.
If I just could very simply, the superintendent's absolutely correct. Education policy is at the discretion of this board, the department, the legislature, the governor, and I in no way have any disposition really on the policy issue at all. What I will tell you, based on my current assessment, is irrespective of the executive order, I believe, and I don't see what harm there would be, but I believe based on everything that is in place today, it is incumbent and would have been incumbent upon the department and Bessie to execute new procurement activities, which would most likely have to require a competitive bid because there are so many testing vendors in play, to execute the Common Core testing for 2015. I think it's that simple, and that could have been done and still can be done. And we certainly can work with the department to execute and expedite a competitive process, and we're not averse to any of the vendors. All we're saying is that we want to create a fair advantage for all vendors for future testing services that are not covered under current scope. That's all we're asking.
Members, if I may, just quickly, I think we're reaching a point of some convergence here. Clearly, it's true that we could, and the governor's executive order, if it's valid, requires that we do enter into a competitive bidding process. We have put forth a proposal to choose to use the current contracts. However... However, and this is why I want to highlight for you, that I think there's, there needs clarification from some party other than the two in question, the administration and Bessie. I do somewhat disagree with the characterization, and I, I recognize the administration is a complex organization, Ms. Nichols, I assume, is speaking for herself, but that any result of the process would be acceptable, and thus, it would be a fair process. And let me read you a couple of quotes from last week's press conference. Quote, "By requiring that to start that process and follow bid laws, that gets Louisiana out of PARC. By doing this, we're getting Louisiana out of PARC. PARC is at least anecdotally more expensive than other tests. I wouldn't expect them to be the low-cost bidder. I certainly would expect them to be the bidder that allows Louisiana input. The ideal solution is Louisiana standards and a Louisiana test." I say that because we can talk all we want about procurement, but the two organizations within government, irrespective of their powers, have a fundamental disagreement in their policies. And their powers are colliding, because they have different incentives as they operate their different processes.
But, but I would contend...
Excuse me. We need clarity in order to resolve such a fundamental disagreement.
I don't want us debating at the table.
I would just say this, though, fairness, speed, and a disposition on policy is not, is not a mechanism, nor is it a reason to circumvent procurement laws.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
I would really, Ms. Smith, I'm all out. I really want to get to the audience, because we've heard, we've gotten way down in the weeds here on an issue that's not going to be resolved at this table.
It's just, it won't take more than a second, I promise. But I think we need, and Mr. Garvey's had plenty of questions.
Sure.
And this is for the superintendent. And when I look at the website, all over the website, it says it's fully aligned to higher standards. So in moving with what I want to do with my motion, it's fully aligned to higher standards, what we did this year. And while everybody goes and fights it out, on whatever they want to decide, I think we've had clarification. You disagree with me on that, but while we're trying to move to some form of sanity before school starts, I want to, us to use the assessments that we used last year. And, and having said that, whether, it didn't matter what side you're on, it's common sense to use what we used last year, so that we can start school, this school year, in a calm manner. And that's my goal for this day. And so, when, again, I'm gonna have that motion, and if it needs to say after the, the office of contractual review, or, or, uh, Division of Administration approves it, but that's gonna be my motion. And we can argue all day long about why we can or cannot do it. I think we can. Fifteen states are left in the consortium, they're running away from it every day. So everybody's got to figure out what they're gonna do.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the audience. Members, I appreciate both of your testimonies. Uh, and I'm gonna call you three at a time, if you don't mind. And again, I'd like to give everybody a chance, so I'm gonna try to keep it to one minute. The first three will be Sarah Wood, Mike Desotell, and Deanna Russell.
Yeah, we need a break.
Yep, uh, make sure your button is... You wanna try one of these? I'm sorry. I think that one was on. Try it again.
Oh, here we go. My name is Sarah Wood, I'm from St. Tammany Parish. I'd first like to urge everyone in this room, including the Bessie members, to please go watch the House Appropriations Committee hearing on April 8th. Watch Part II, the entire thing. I would say that somebody's singing a different tune here before this board, and so I would urge you to please watch April 8th, House Appropriations Committee, Part II. It starts right off at the beginning, it's about an hour long. Um, I would like to say that the governor, in, because Bessie is created by Constitution and exercises the three powers of government, all in one, you exercise all three powers of government in one, but not one of the three branches, but you are not, but is not one of the three branches of government. Each of the branches has authority over aspects of the exercise of Bessie's constitutional authority, in order to protect and preserve our system of checks and balances. The governor, and I'm going quickly, because of your minute, the governor and his duty to faithfully execute the laws, can refuse to allow Bessie the execution of any rule or regulation as a matter of right, under the constitutional authority of the executive branch. Thus, the law that is cited is really superfluous in recognizing such a right, yet because of that law, there is no doubt as to whether the governor is acting within his power as executive in suspending a Bessie rule. The law does not require a reason for what the governor did, but he gave, he gave you one, and that is that the rule instructs LDE to purchase assessments...
This is what I'm gonna have to ask you. I know it's short, I apologize.
Where, where doing so might be a violation of law. You basically said that the sole source contract from DRC had been in existence for three years. But that was when Louisiana was, one, developing its own tests, and, two, was a combination between Common Core and what we had before, the transitional... That would justify a sole source contract. Here we have, and you can look at that committee hearing, where Mr. White states that PARC is an off-the-shelf test. There are other vendors, I don't see where there's... You all are creating confusion, because you want confusion. There is no confusion. I'm an attorney, there is no confusion with this.
Thank you. Mr. Desotell.
Mr. President, in addition to speaking for myself, I've been asked to speak for the Louisiana Association of Educators, and I would appreciate if you would give me the additional time. My name is Michael Desotell, I'm a retired educator, and I write a blog for educators and for parents. And I'm here to ask the board to consider a suspension of the Common Core standards, and the related PARC testing in Louisiana, until Louisiana educators can improve and revise our, our present standards. I'm talking about the standards that Education Week less than, uh, two years ago rated as second in the nation. I believe that meets the criteria of a national stand, nationally recognized standard. The reason I'm asking that the Common Core be suspended is there's growing evidence that the Common Core standards are not working. There's a terrible disaster in New York State, where over 80% of the students failed the test that related to the Common Core. We were told that the Common Core would reduce the achievement gap between rich and poor. Instead, in New York State, it has increased the achievement gap, the difference in performance. I think it's time that we pause. We have perfectly good standards under the LEAP, and ILEAP, that were called the grade level expectations. Those are the standards that we had operated under, and I'm asking the board to please consider continuing those standards, and I think it would then meet the requirements of the contract, because those LEAP and ILEAP tests were specifically mentioned in the contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Desotell. Uh, Marla Baldwin?
I'd like to leave my, taking time to Sarah Wood.
I gave Sarah two minutes, I'm gonna give her another one.
Okay, I'll get to finish my statement, or, Michael. I wrote down every word Superintendent White uttered in the House Appropriations Committee last night in Part II of the April 8th hearing, and the entire exchange in response to basically one opening question posed by Representative Brett Geiman. Do we have a contract with PARC? The answer at, at the time, though drawn out and skillfully adept in word choices, was basically no. Mr. White stated that the PARC assessment was an off-the-shelf test, and would be obtained through a purchase order like DIBELS, even though he admitted that there is more than one consortium, and likely more than one vendor for this off-the-shelf test. The question is now, that we have a contract for PARC, which is the morphed DRC contract, I think it is. Did that contract go through OCR for administrative approval, now in light of the fact that it's no longer specifically as to Louisiana-developed GLEs, or whatever you all call them, and/or the transition period? Even, even if, as Mr. White stated before committee, the contract for PARC did not have to go through the competitive bid process, because it would be a sole source contract, a sole source, a sole source contract must at least have a determination made that it is truly the only source. It is a curious thing about that morphed DRC contract now effectively suspended...
This is what I'm gonna have to ask you, wrap it up. You can't submit.
Because in committee, when asked with whom Louisiana would be contracting for PARC, Mr. White stated that it would be whatever vendor had the intellectual property that the states of the consortium designed to make the test. But he never actually stated that those vendors would be obtained by RFPs derived from the consortium. Though there was no obligation on Louisiana to actually purchase, just about every assurance, though, up to that point, was made by joining that consortium. So even though Louisiana still had to choose a vendor, whomever Louisiana would choose would first have to be okay, or chosen by PARC. Kind of a list of approved providers, like with your health insurance. So my question is, does the DCR have an RFP with the consortium for the use of its intellectual property? Because the Louisiana MOU states that Louisiana will use, will use the consortium-developed assessment, assessment, assessment systems for its assessments. It does not state consortium-designed. Mr. White's position at that hearing was that the Louisiana MOU was not the purchasing of a test. My point is, I don't understand why y'all don't hold this man accountable, for the different stories that he states, the semantics that he uses. And I really, I know that you're giving me extra time, but maybe this is the problem. You're rushing us, you're rushing through this. I don't care, this is my kid's future, and you're rushing through it. Like, maybe that's what brought us into this position to begin with.
Vicky, Vicky Johnson, Leslie Truax, and Candace Watzey?
I'd like to give my minutes to Dr. Schneider as well.
I don't think I've called, Doc...
Just called, Vicky Johnson.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Okay.
But we'll note it.
Okay.
Am I on?
Uh, you might want to try, I think the one on the end is not working, if you want to try.
I'll switch with you, please. I'd like to offer some clarity. On May 27th, a Mex, a New Mexico state judge suspended Pearson's developing the PARC test. New Mexico is the state that is being used to conduct the request for proposal for development of the PARC assessments. It is not unique to New Mexico, that they were chosen, they were chosen on behalf of the consortium. Pearson was awarded a contract, American Institutes for Research contested that, saying that the RFP was tailored to Pearson, and that is why Pearson was the only bidder for the contract. On May 27th, a judge said, upheld AIR's complaint. Right now, development of the PARC assessments is suspended, pending review by the state contract agent, I know his last name is Maxwell. And he is hearing from both parties, he's going to make a decision. He has, that has not been made public as of this morning, so it's still upheld. So PARC development is still suspended, and even if it is resolved by the, the state agent making a recommendation, there is still an appeals process, so PARC is up in the air. PARC is having its own contractual problems. As for data recognition court, data recognition court is not a vendor recognized for PARC, but it is a vendor recognized for the other consortium, Smarter Balance, one of several. Thank you.
Thank you. And please state your name, maybe you might...
Mercy, oh, I'm sorry, Mercy Schneider.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. My name is Leslie Truax, I'm a parent and a teacher from Cauquashew Parish, and I am not paid to be here today. This is my summer, we've been fighting Common Core for several years now. I fully support Governor General's decision to reject us from Common Core and PARC. So as a parent and a teacher, that's where I stand on that. I'm also very surprised at the information that was just disclosed from Superintendent White. As a teacher, I've signed oaths of secrecy when administering tests, and I have never seen the test questions for the LEAP test, or EOC test. I've never seen this. As a parent, I've never seen the test questions. So I'm, I'm very surprised at this. However, I'm sure they're being downloaded on Louisiana believes as we speak. Okay? And so, the information that's being sent to the public, and it's, to me, it's a scare tactic, but it's how much money is this going to cost taxpayers? $25.2 million if we reject Common Core? As a taxpayer, my question is, how much is it gonna cost us if we stay in Common Core? How much has it cost us to implement Common Core to this date? As taxpayers, we, it's our money, and we should know this. So whenever he's giving out these figures, where's the basic accounting in this? Why is the public not being given that information? We should decide what's right for the children in Louisiana. And as a parent and a teacher, I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Uh, Dr. Elizabeth Myers, Jenny Klein, Scott Richard. Elizabeth, I, Ms. Myers, I don't think that one's working yet.
My name's Dr. Elizabeth Myers, I'm a retired teacher, and at this time, I am a parent advocate. A lot of the problems, parents are coming to me, because they've seen my research. Most importantly is this, I have a couple of things and very little time to get it across to you. Number one, the chaos and the confusion in the classroom isn't recent. This began earlier this year, when they rushed the Common Core standards into the classroom. It affected my son, to the extent that I have an 11th grader, I had to pull out in November and start homeschooling, because we were afraid, with what he was bringing home in the new curriculum, and in the new textbooks, was not gonna get him college-ready. And as someone who taught College Bound for a decade, I know what it looks like. And you can look at my scores from the school I was at, you can look at my first-time freshman report and see, that the students at my school were 97 to 90%, 94 to 97% of our students were in good standing at the university at the end of the year, so I know what College Bound looks like. Second, I have a fourth-grade grandson, one that's going into fourth grade, that we are considering pulling now, because of the chaos and the confusion in the classroom. Lastly, the teachers of this state, as a teacher for 20 years, I had one in service on standards and testing, one, in 20 years. And I managed to work with my students in those 20 years, to the best of my ability, and our evidence is our scores, and our first-time freshman report, and our ACT. Teachers in this state know how to do their job, if you would allow them. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Jenny Klein. I have two students in high school. Can you hear her? Hello?
Yes, try it now, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, my name is Jenny Klein, I have two high school students in St. Tammany Parish, and what is the purpose of testing? It's so the teacher and student know what was answered correctly and incorrectly, so they can determine what the student needs more help with. I just don't see this happening. Why were the high school kids given the PARC pilot test? Did we pay for this? They're never gonna use the PARC pilot, because we do the ACT series. Another thing was, juniors were given three and a half hours to fill out an ACT demographic portion. Are you aware of that? They wasted a half a day. I had my son fill out nothing. And then he took the test, actual test, the next day. This is just data collection. I know I don't have a lot of time, so I have to basically decide to opt my kids out of any type of testing or survey, because I feel it's worthless. Colleges now are looking at a four-year transcript. We're dealing with the Ivy Leagues here for my son, and a lot of them are going to test optional. They, they don't even believe the validity of these tests. And I think our laws need to look at, to see if a HICE takes test is really where we need to go.
Appreciate your testimony, thank you. Mr. Richard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Scott Richard, representing 68 school boards across the state of Louisiana. We understand the sense of urgency, we realize that this is not a debate on the merits of PARC or Common Core. However, if you ask any educator in the state of Louisiana, what test will be utilized next year, as messaged by the Department of Education, it's clearly that PARC will be the assessment. We realize there's a vast differing opinions between governmental bodies at this point in time. The School Boards Association, along with the superintendents across this state, have clearly articulated their message to stakeholders. We have a much more urgent issue that faces us, the start of school. In order to provide continuity for our communities and our employees, we would humbly and respectfully request that you take into consideration utilizing the same assessment series utilized this past year. It's aligned to higher standards, it's obvious that there's been communication between the governor's office and this body, and the Department of Education, that there is a possibility that funds can be utilized under existing contracts to continue with those assessments. It's an injustice to our students across the state of Louisiana, and our... It's an injustice to our students across the state of Louisiana and our communities to not resolve the matter today.
Absolutely.
And we, again, this is not about taking sides. This is not about school boards and superintendents and principals and teachers taking sides with the governor's office or with Bessie. Let's focus on our charge of educating students. Let the debate continue outside of the school classrooms on the legal issues and the legal ramifications of Park or not Park, but let's resolve the issue today. And we would ask that you take into serious consideration, again, utilizing the path that's been laid out for you in regards to moving forward with the same assessment series that was used last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Stinson, Edward Respony, John Warner Smith.
Pardon?
Do you want to begin first? Would you like to go first?
Sure, I can go first. Whoever said my name first, I assumed I was up.
I will ask you to sit only because we can't hear you if you're not sitting at the mic.
Okay. You said my name first, so I assumed I was up.
Yes.
All right. My name's Amanda Stinson. I live in New Orleans Parish. I am a parent of a child that just graduated high school and one that's entering high school. I'm a transplant. I am a military parent. I mean, we're a military family. We were in Japan and we got orders in 2006. We had a lot of concerns about coming to Louisiana, to New Orleans. Everybody asked about Katrina, but our real concern is about the schools because Louisiana is trailing the country, rated 47th, 48th with education, not standards, but actual educational achievement. And that was a very realistic fear. My children, it was a realistic fear. My children entered the school system here, the one that everyone's trying to tell us is adequate, and they were three years ahead of the curriculum. That means they spent three years not learning any new material other than what we got outside of the educational system here. That's unacceptable. And what this translates to is Louisiana children graduating behind the bar. The playing field is not level. When they graduate, they're at a disadvantage in getting into college and in getting scholarship dollars. That's why our children are predominantly spending more time getting developmental math and English courses when they get to college.
May I ask you to wrap it up politely?
All right. Well, I wanted to thank you all for continuing to do your job and urge you to press forward to continue with Common Core so that our children do have a level playing field. Forget about the Plan B. Let's stick with the one that we've been implementing and that we're ready to implement in the classroom. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here today.
I'm Edward L. Respony. I'm a contractor. We employ well over 1,000 families in Louisiana, been involved with education reform as well as workforce development for the last 20 years, particularly in education reform the last five years, when we realized that the K-12 system was not adequately preparing our students. I'm here just again to tell you I support the Common Core, support having a nationally-recognized, not a federally-run, but a nationally-recognized assessment as well as bringing relevance into the education where critical thinking is with Common Core. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, this is John Warner Smith. Can't hear me. John Warner Smith, CEO of Education's Next Horizon. After hearing the testimony of the commissioner, I actually changed my comments around a little bit, just very quickly. I'm going to wear the hat of a former state agency head and, and who has dealt with OCR and the division on a number of occasions with sole-source contracts and competitively-bid contracts. And you really have a mess on your hands here. It is clearly a case in which someone other than the division and the governor's office and you will have to step in and resolve. And I urge you, on behalf of the children, the parents, teachers of our state, to get whatever legal help you need to solve this problem because internally, you, the government, and your partners will not be able to do it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Judith Vale, Rain Martin, Deborah Bellinger.
And while I wait, there are some cards that did not wish to speak. I will read into the record quickly. Guy Terry, representing the Louisiana Power Coalition. He says oppose the recommendation. Patricia Terry, Louisiana Power Coalition, oppose the recommendation. Are these all nice feet?
Yeah. Oh, I think that missed.
Maybe nobody wanted to sit by me? I'm not sure. My name is Rain Martin. I'm the executive director of Stanford Children Louisiana, where I have the honor and privilege to support parents and educators in their quest to improve education for all kids in Louisiana. I would like to thank you today, first, for having a meeting, and secondly, for your leadership on this particular issue. I sit before you today requesting that you please seek clarity from the courts related to Bessie's authority to determine the set of standards and aligned assessments that are used in classrooms throughout Louisiana. While we at Stanford Children are not attorneys, we have had a chance to review the governor's executive order, the Louisiana Constitution, and the laws and policies that govern the administration of education in Louisiana. We believe it is clear that the Louisiana Constitution and state law grants Bessie, you, the authority over schools. This authority means that Bessie has the right and duty to determine the standards for the kids in the state of Louisiana. You made that determination in 2010 when you supported Common Core state standards. Today is actually the fourth anniversary of that particular vote. And if you read through the governor's executive order, he himself seems to actually understand and acknowledge that, in that there is no explicit direction in his executive order to create new standards for our children, simply a wish that the legislature take this up next year. Because this year, the legislature clearly supported the standards that you all have approved. Another pressing legal issue is over the governor's handling of an existing state contract. How can an existing state contract, testing contract that has been in place for four years be valid for everything listed in its scope except for the purchasing of new testing questions? How can the governor determine that he has constitutional authority to restrict your use of an existing contract that is in compliance with the law? And what authority does the executive branch of the government have to tell you which vendors are eligible to be used as subcontractors with your contractor? Additionally, it is clear in statutory law that there are regulations in the Louisiana procurement code that govern the change to existing contracts, and we believe those have been violated. There is another grave concern associated with this questionable legal action. We're very concerned that the governor's issuance of executive orders and contract suspensions removing from Common Core state standards undermine 15 years' worth of work in strong accountability, evaluating teachers, students, and schools. With no test in place now, which is essentially what is currently the situation, or with two or three years to create a new test, our accountability system will be destroyed and Louisiana students will surely fall behind. Louisiana's accountability system assigns letter grades, an endeavor that the governor himself actually supported and pushed forward, and which is largely based on how students perform on the state assessment. The number of students in failing schools has dramatically declined because we're able to measure them and have a system in place that gives students choices, one of the best set of choices around the country for students that are in struggling schools. We also know that teachers are evaluated based on this same assessment and no longer have that information now to make decisions about who should be in what schools, tenure decisions, employment decisions, and compensation decisions.
Ms. Myers, I need you to.
And most importantly, students themselves rely on these tests to know if they're going to receive top scholarship, if they're in fact going to be able to graduate, and if they're going to be able to move on to the next level of education. There is a lot for you to consider, and you are doing an absolutely amazing job. Everywhere I travel in this state, citizens talk about your remarkable commitment to raising standards. Our parents, educators, and team could never thank you enough for holding true to our students' dreams and aspirations. I leave you with this quote by Mark Twain. "It is curious that physical courage should be so common in the world and moral courage so rare. In this time, you are the epitome of moral courage. We ask you to seek legal clarity, and we appreciate what you do."
Yes, ma'am.
Happy anniversary. I wanted to tell you happy anniversary. It was today, four years ago, that Bessie adopted the Common Core state standards. We began our work in Calcasieu four years ago after that adoption. I want to just say thank you for staying the course these last four years and to tell you why I think it was worth it. I serve in my district as the accountability coordinator, and I work with Common Core implementation as well. Having served as one of Louisiana's Park educator leader cadre members for the past three years, I've had opportunities to travel to districts and present to teachers what I learned as a cadre member about the Common Core and how the Park assessments can assist them in their instruction of the Corps. And those Park assessments are not just the ones we're talking about today, but it's extra assessments that they're going to provide for teachers that will be able to use them formatively in instruction to help prepare kids to understand what the Common Core standards actually mean.
And Ms. Vale, I might ask you to wrap it up as well.
Yes, sir. What I would like for us to do is to have clarity for people like a young superintendent who would have been here today had he not been with his, Bessie, had he not been with his board members, to provide clarity for young principals who are out there working with their teachers, to provide clarity for all the curriculum coordinators that are out there doing all these jobs in their districts. And in Calcasieu, for our 140 teacher leaders, they need clarity as they go back in this next year. But most of all, clarity for our students who deserve the best standards and assessments that I have seen in the 45 years I've been in education, and that's the Common Core state standards and Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Olivier, Amy De Slott, and Dr. Philip Roseman.
I'm Deborah Bellinger.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I was waiting. I'm Deborah Bellinger. I'm a consulting teacher in Calcasieu Parish, and I just wanted to speak to you a little bit about what we have done so far this summer, working in our district to prepare for the implementation of Park. We've groups of teachers that have worked to develop common assessments, and we're moving forward to align those assessments with Park. And what we just asked for, again, as Ms. Vale said, is clarity on are we moving in the right direction? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I don't, I can't remember what order I called y'all in, so decide amongst yourselves.
I'm Michael Olivier. I'm a former Secretary of Economic Development in the state of Louisiana.
Make sure your microphone's on. I don't believe it is.
I'm Michael Olivier. Can you hear that? I was Secretary of Economic Development in the state of Louisiana for 2004, 2008. I want, my, my message here is to represent the Committee of 100 for Economic Development Incorporated. We represent since 1992 the eight economic regions of the state, private sector CEOs from throughout the state, over 100 of them. And a majority of our members feel that higher standards in education is a workforce issue. And I know you do, too. We have an unprecedented economic opportunity now with all of what's happening with the natural gas phenomenon. And we have something on the order of, depending on who you're talking to, which economist, $60, $80 billion of economic activity that have been announced. And to take advantage of that, we're going to need, beyond incentives, we're going to need a workforce. And that workforce is our workforce that we need to have in terms of having the competency able to, to operate. And you're going to hear that over and over again. As Louisiana's business roundtable, we urge Bessie to continue your support of higher standards and testing for accountability so we can have that qualified workforce in our state. If it's clarity you need to move forward, then please get the clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Amy De Slott. I'm an instructional coach in Lafayette Parish, and I'm also the team leader for Louisiana Core Advocates, teachers who have been implementing the Core standards for the past four years and also working in conjunction with the state teacher leader advisors to help prepare some of the materials that are in the teacher leader toolbox. First of all, I want to thank you as a board for the freedom that you have given educators to explore and to learn the standards, collaborate across district lines, which is something that I had never experienced prior to Common Core, and even to collaborate with other teachers across the states. I will tell you, in my travels across this nation, I have seen teachers from other states who are so envious of the work that we have done here as teacher leaders to train, to implement the standards, to assist each other, as recently as our June teacher leader training where 4,000 new teachers were trained in Common Core standards. What our teachers need is clarity moving forward. For those of us who start with the standards and embrace them, we have seen the success in our classrooms with our students, and we refuse to go back to mediocrity. We are ready to move forward, and we would like your support. We would like for you to seek the clarity that is necessary so that we can stop helping our governor try to find his next job. We need to worry about the students and the teachers in this state.
Thank you.
I'm Philip Roseman. I'm a physician from Shreveport, Bossier. I represent the Shreveport and Bossier Chamber of Commerce and also as Chair of Blueprint Louisiana. First, like I state, the obvious is that there's an obvious huge difference in perspectives and a lot of passion around this issue. And I'm sure this has been very hard on y'all personally and professionally. I thank you for having open meetings like this, for listening to both sides of the issue and making informed decisions. And I'm very appreciative of that. What I'm certain also about is, from listening to this introduction, is that there is not much clarity. It appears there's constitutional questions. I'm not a lawyer, but it appears there's constitutional questions and there's contract questions. And there's going to be a lot of discussion about those different questions. To me, it's almost, you know, Grotta Nate's been thrown in the room and you're left to pick up the pieces. And I wish you the best in, in doing that. I hope you can, to make that work. My request today is to not let the controversy distract from the mission of the organization. So your mission of your organization is to support our school districts in bringing higher, clearer, and fewer standards to the students of our state. That's going to require leadership, it's going to require clarity and consistency, and I do hope you can provide it. Let me close by saying I live in Shreveport. That's the home of Barksdale Air Force Base in our community. It's the headquarters of the Global Strike Command. That's the command of our country's nuclear warfare capabilities. This past Friday, I was at a meeting where the three-star general commander of Global Strike spoke to a group of business leaders in Bossier. And he said, and I quote, "The most powerful change in developing the nuclear enterprise is to empower people to do their job. Certainly, if this is so important to the armed services and our nuclear enterprise, it's equally or more important to support and empower our administrators, principals, and teachers as they roll out higher, clearer, and fewer standards in the state of Louisiana." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Catherine, I think it's Gopert, but I'm not positive of the last name. I think that's correct. Brooke Falgort, Falgo or Falgo, maybe?
Catherine.
Pardon me?
Catherine.
Okay. And then Ariel McDunit. Did I get that right? Urban League of Greater New Orleans. I apologize. Ms. Gopert.
Want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Guppelt. I'm a 30-year educator, and I've had classroom experience. I want to thank Dr. Beebe, Carolyn Hill, and Jane Smith for asking for the meeting in the first place. Thank you for your initiative in doing that. I'd like to bring some clarity into this agenda item. It was to consider an updated report for two executive orders, and nobody has said yet what those executive orders were, and we talked all around them. I'd like to give you just a summary. Executive Order 6, suspend revisions to statewide assessment standards and practices and authorized and directed this board, not, not anybody else, the governor said he wanted this board, quote, "to implement a process to..." this board, quote, "to implement a process to authorize paper assessments in the 2014 school year," end quote. That's clarity. Executive Order Number Seven, reiterate state law that requires a competitive procurement process designed to promote public confidence, ensure transparency, and spend public funds wisely. We just heard that 200, let's see if I can get it right, $200 million has been spent already without a lot of oversight or accountability, and you are looking at another $20 million this year that the legislature has given you for assessments. Today, the public is here because we want you to publish an RFP for paper assessments to use in 2014-15. That will bring clarity, take the confusion away. Any delay in dragging of your feet only furthers and seals in the minds of the public your commitment to continue chaos and confusion. It is not the responsibility of this board to settle a fundamental difference of opinion between Superintendent White and Governor Jindal. Your number-one commitment should be to seek solutions that will have a positive effect on the educational experiences of Louisiana students. And I would also like to mention that our superintendent is on the PARK Board, and I'd like to know what incentives that he's getting. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Stephanie DeSalle, Kelly Botcher. I can't read that. Kelly, I couldn't read your name.
Hello. My name is Stephanie DeSalle, and I represent the Council for a Better Louisiana, and we've been in business for, we're a nonprofit, nonpartisan that has worked on many issues for the state. And we also pay a lot of attention to laws and good governing practices and what is appropriate. I'm sorry that you've been placed in this position today. I'm sorry the whole state has been placed on this position today, but it's not been because of any substantive issues regarding, you know, algebra skills or reading comprehension. It's been about politics, and it's really sad. But it needs to be said that neither you nor Bessie members that came before you, nor superintendents before this one, who are not here to defend themselves, have done anything to create this situation. Likewise, the legislature did not create this situation. But because Louisiana has historically achieved less for its students than almost everywhere else in the country, all you have done is to fulfill your legal, financial, and ethical duties to students, parents, schools, and taxpayers by raising the bar for academic knowledge and skills in grades and courses. That's all you've done. All a heavy majority of the legislature has done is to continue to chart a direction for more rigorous, nationally comparable standards and tests. They themselves have, of course, no authority or expertise to develop or choose specific math, English, or reading standards. The legislature hasn't and never has and never will. I would just say that nevertheless, because of questionable political maneuvers by the administration, it is now necessary, it is really truly necessary, for you to reaffirm your constitutional and statutory authority and responsibility to set any and all math and English language standards in all grades and courses, to choose the tests that best measure them, and to implement our accountability laws faithfully. This is one of your prime responsibilities. It is and has always been within your domain. No other agency, no one politician is nor ever has been in charge of picking and choosing classroom standards and accompanying tests for public schools, which is what is being attempted right now. So I would just say, thank you for standing strong. You have a right to reaffirm your own duties and responsibilities to the state. And I just thank you for the public service that you do, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Becker with the Louisiana Federation for Children. I'm here today to ask you to move forward with whatever actions are needed to bring legal clarity on your authority over student testing for accountability purposes. It is imperative that the debate over the testing contract is ended as soon as possible for the students of our state. Our parental school choice options depend on the accountability system that Louisiana has worked on to improve for over a decade. Yearly student testing data drives school letter grades. The parents need to know how their child or children's school is performing, and with no yearly state test, there will not be an accountability system providing this vital information to the parents through the use of school letter grades. Without school letter grades, parents' school choice options will be greatly limited. The state has worked too hard to ensure parents have school choice options. It would be a travesty to deny parents the right to choose the school that best meets the needs of their children. For this reason, I urge you to take the necessary actions to ensure statewide testing continues, our accountability system continues, and parents continue to have school choice options that best meets the needs of their children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Nixon, co-director of Kane Center and former classroom teacher. Thank you for staying the course and working towards higher standards for our children. Louisiana needs you to continue. The PARK tests are critical to measuring student learning, and Louisiana educators were integral in development of the PARK test items. They have helped produce a high-quality assessment based upon what students need to understand and be able to do to be college-ready. Hopefully, you will be able to honor the PARK agreement so Louisiana can move forward and our students can be prepared for the workplace without any further delays. I work with many teachers across our region, and from my experience, our teachers are up to the task of implementing higher standards and the accompanying tests. They adequately measure the learning that they will be receiving with our higher standards, and it is important that we support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Timke? Ruthie Fryerson? What was the last one?
Mr. President.
Yes.
While they are coming, at some point, I think we need to ask the gentleman to the table that actually wrote the executive order for the governor. He's been here the entire time, and I think it's most appropriate that he come to the table, Mr. Enright, at some point.
Sure.
There's been some accusations made that I think he can clarify.
You didn't?
Thank you. I'm Ruthie Fryerson, founder of Citizens for One Greater New Orleans. We've been here now for nine years since after Katrina, and our organization was formed shortly after that storm as an advocacy-good government group to speak out on behalf of the citizens of our region and also of our state. And we've been in Baton Rouge at the legislature, we're known as the Red Coats, for the past nine years, going to meetings for education, in criminal justice, ethics-good government reform, and also for Levis. But I wanted to say that I want to thank everybody who's here today, because I was a school teacher also, and every single person in this room cares deeply about the children and about the future of our citizens. So I don't in any way want to criticize anyone in the room for their thoughts, and this is a democracy, and that's what we believe in. But at any rate, I think today what you all need is clarity, and you also need to understand that it's very important for you all to get outside counsel because you're dealing with a constitutional law. And, you know, I appreciate what was said to you all from, I'm trying to think of her name, who spoke to you all, Kristi Nichols, because she comes from the administration, and she also used to be Jindal's Deputy Chief of Staff. And I think that there are two different points of view in this issue, one from the Department of Education, somewhat of Bessie, and also of the administration. And you all need a constitutional attorney to guide you in trying to get rid of this confusion that you all are facing. It's really a confusing thing that is affecting all of us in this state and the children. So that is my recommendation on behalf of our organization. You know, our children just can't afford the impasse. We realize the number of years that we've put in. We've been up here with many other civic business organizations, and it's been very broad-based. As a matter of fact, the Urban League, I'm disappointed that they're not here today. They had a very good article in the paper in support of Common Core today. But at any rate, for the past three years, we've worked with the Department of Education, with the Jindal Administration on Common Core and on these reforms. And so this year, I must say, in the legislature, it was a surprise that there had been a turn of events in, you know, understanding exactly the confusion of what the problems were. And so I just, perhaps I was not planning on speaking, but I'd really like to encourage you to get independent counsel to resolve this and to also, I want to congratulate you all because, you know, leadership really does, as others have said, require consistency, courage, and the decision to move forward. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Debbie Sacks, Anthony Nichols, and Lenny De Toro.
I'm Anthony Nichols. I'd like to defer my time after this speech later.
Okay.
I'm Mercedes Schneider. I'd like to clarify again that PARK is caught up in legal issues in New Mexico. PARK is not available. PARK development, assessment development, has been suspended. Pearson was awarded that contract in May. If Pearson gets that contract again, the board, I urge the board to consider that Pearson, since 2011, has made 24, at least 24, gross errors in its items, its scoring, its proficiency level reporting. It has affected school districts around the nation. It's affected promotion decisions, graduation decisions, awards and scholarships. You need to know that. So as you go into a request for proposal and follow that, know that as of today, as of right now, the PARK assessment is off the table. Whether or not a state can take its PARK items and run from the consortia, that has not been discussed. If Mr. White advocates that is so, he needs to produce documentation to support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Sacks, just a parent. I'm not being paid to be here from St. Tammany. Exactly how much testing does the state plan on administering to our children? The state is currently administering DIBELS Next, Explore, PLAN, ACT, EOC, LEAP, ILEAP, Common Core Assessments, and now they want to add another test that's not even available, PARK? When will this end? This is child abuse. Louisiana needs to face up to the fact that we have lost it with high-stakes testing. Why is a parent or a teacher not allowed to review the LEAP test or PARK? I do not think many parents are aware of this. I know I wasn't at all aware of this. Why are children told not to tell their parents what are on these tests? Many legislators were shocked to learn this during this past legislative session. As taxpayers, why are we paying millions of dollars for tests that are worthless to our children simply to enrich testing companies? It is time for Louisiana parents to join other parents in other states to opt out of this testing scam at UnitedOptOut.com for the sake of our children and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Enright. I apologize, I lost your card apparently previously.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Is the light on?
Yes, it is.
Might have scooted closer. It's not very sensitive.
You just pulled the mic closer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. What I've heard consistently throughout this meeting, and I've, you know, really been interested in the different viewpoints, is the consistent theme is an attempt to show a lack of clarity. And I do not see a lack of clarity. The executive orders are very clear. They simply direct Bessie and the Department of Education to undertake a transparent, competitive process. The beginning of this presentation opened with a reference to Bessie's constitutional authority. In Article Eight, Section Three, the first paragraph lays out Bessie's authority, and two times in that paragraph, it says, "in accordance with law." Where is it unclear that any public body is subject to state law? State procurement code applies to every public body. There are specific exceptions to that, but they're not here. And so where is the lack of clarity that there should be a transparent, competitive Now, Mr. Chairman, one time, just a few minutes ago, you moved the meeting along with, we're not going to settle things at this table. I completely agree. It's going to be settled at your table. And if...
Well, I don't think that's clear. You see, that's the point, that's why we're here. See, we actually did vote to settle this, and the legislature did as well. And your branch, your executive branch stepped in as that we couldn't do that. So I'm respectfully disagree with you.
There is, Bessie is part of the executive branch, just like the Public Service Commission is part of the executive branch, or Wildlife and Fisheries, or any other state agency. This is our executive branch. Now, if we could...
And who writes the laws of this state?
The legislative branch, there's no question.
Okay.
And so if, in 2012, when Act 275 passed, which originally created the standards-based assessment for the years 2014-15, if we knew that was going to require something different, why are we now on the eve of a school year and a competitive, transparent process has not been undertaken? There's, that certainly needs clarity.
I'm glad you agree with that, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Now, the implication of...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
How many seconds did I get?
You got three minutes.
Well, may I give, may I give him additional minutes?
Sure.
We gave Kristi additional time.
Now, the implication of raising this red herring of a lack of clarity is that somewhere in the Constitution or somewhere in state law, there is going to be found that a public body does not have to follow procurement law. And if we just simply answer that question, does the body feel it needs to follow procurement law? We obviously follow an open-meetings law when we publish an agenda, and we follow every one of these other laws. What is it about the procurement code that there is a lack of clarity? I simply do not see it. Now, I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Maranti.
I was not so under the impression that we were not going to follow the procurement laws.
That...
We're not excused from those.
That we've heard at this table today that entering PARK through the MOU in 2010 did not obligate the state to purchase anything, was not a contract to purchase anything, and was not an attempt to purchase anything. And so if we accept all that is true, that means that there has to be a competitive process to purchase these tests for 2014, 2015.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dominique Nagel, or is it Magel? I'm sorry.
I'm Dominic Nagel. 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 I'm Dominic Nagel.
Dominique Nagel, or is it Magel, I'm sorry? Nathan Curtis, and Frank Buckley.
I'm Dominique McGee.
Oh, I'm sorry, McGee.
That's okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to know why this BESI board would even consider continuing with moving forward with Park testing next year. I mean, this whole process seems insane to me. The Park testing hasn't even been developed yet. You hear that it's in litigation. I just don't really get what the rush and the push to get this in the classrooms next year is really for. Why can we not continue, as has been recommended, to use the tests that we used last year? So it buys you guys a little bit of time to figure out what's going on. Why are we going to push something that is a mess? It's causing confusion for the students and the teachers, and it's really immoral what you're doing. So I ask that you please take your time and review this. Stop trying to push a test that's got tons of federal money tied into it. That's something nobody wants to discuss. When the Department of Education, the U.S. Department of Education, gives $185 million to the Park Consortium to develop this test, and then you want to put information out there that this is not a federal intrusion into testing? I have a big problem with that. You've got to be insane. We need to use state tests and keep things local. Why are we going to use a national federal test?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Nathan Curtis. I'll try to be short and to the point. Just a few observations. You've heard this statement before. Haste makes waste. That government governs best, that governs least. And I have a, before I get to this, I have a short quote from George Washington, which I think is very applicable to what we're talking about today. One of the things that I see in Common Core overall, it's not what you're doing here necessarily, and I appreciate the courtesy shown to me earlier, as I've spoken with a number of you, is that it seems to have pretty much disenfranchised the average citizen in the sense that the average citizen's voice no longer counts as far as what education, the direction it's going in. The local school board's authority has been pretty much taken away from them. Everything is centralized more and more. I wonder often how Benjamin Franklin got along without Common Core, how Thomas Edison got along without Common Core. And there's a gentleman I've mentioned to several people here today by the name of Ben Carson. I think most of you know that name. I would, my wife presented me with a copy of his book, One Nation, on Father's Day. I had heard him speak accidentally when he spoke at the National Day of Prayer.
And sir, I'm going to have to ask you to try to wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up, thank you. The lessons that he has to share with us in his book is that young men can learn very well, and young women, if they read a lot of books, if they turn the TV off. The point I'm trying to make is all the education that people get is not necessarily determined by the school curriculum, nor the school board, nor the BESI board. What we do for ourselves is what counts most. And I think children should be, young people in schools should be left as much leeway as possible to choose the books that they will read and the direction that they will go. I find, overall, that the BESI board, not the BESI board program, but the Common Core program, is too directive, doesn't leave enough freedom for people to choose.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Mr. Buckley. No, it's not on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Frank Buckley. I'm a member of C6, Conscious Concerned Citizens, Controlling Community Change. I have been standing for children for more than half of my life. I've been coaching for 29 years, and I've been an educator for 20. I taught in New Orleans Parish, I'm president of teaching in Jefferson Parish. At the end of this school year, my principal asked me why so many of my students scored unsatisfactory on their test. When I explained to him that my sixth-grade students have never passed the fourth-grade LEAP test, meaning they sat in fourth grade for two years, they failed it twice, and they took them out and they moved them into sixth grade. Common Core standards, which is just another word for GLE, had me teaching sixth-grade students eighth-grade GLEs. So that's a four-year gap. So the only way those kids were going to pass the test is if I allowed them to cheat. And I do not cheat. On the other hand, my honors class, 95% of them scored basic or better. But all of those students were sitting in sixth grade. So I'm against Common Core. I'm for grade-level expectations, but against Common Core. Those fourth-grade students that never passed the fourth-grade test could not multiply one-digit numbers. A couple of weeks ago, there was a principal that sat at the same table, and she was a freshman, she talked about her freshman class coming in, and she did some research on them. And 97% of her freshman class had never passed the fourth or eighth-grade LEAP test. Basically, what's going on, there's a lot of cheating going on. I said in front of this board before and told you how I reported to John White about cheating in 2011, and he said he was not going to investigate. I'm not a lawyer, but people in Atlanta went to jail for that. Okay, last year, we had the conversation about vouchers. And it was asking where we're going to get the money to pay for vouchers. John White said he's going to get $400 million for underestimating cost of contracts of buildings, schools in New Orleans. Couple of weeks ago, they had a meeting in New Orleans saying that they're $300-plus million in the hole for building schools. Again, I'm not an attorney, but I don't think you could take FEMA money and spend it how you want.
Mr. Buckley, if I can ask you to kind of narrow the focus.
Is that my three minutes?
No, no, I've given you your three minutes, but...
I didn't even hear the bell go off.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not. I'm telling you, the focus of your comments maybe a little bit.
It's, well, my focus is, Common Core is the same thing about the voucher program, is money. It has nothing to do with academic achievement. When you have a superintendent tells you he's not going to investigate cheating, he's not concerned about academic achievement. He's concerned about money. And I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to get up. A message from my master. It says, "What does it profit a man to gain the world and lose his soul? What does it profit a man, a board, a female, a school district, to gain the world and lose his soul?" Thank you.
Ralph Rochdoe, Amy Lemoine, and Lee Barrios.
Good afternoon, my name is Ralph Rochdoe. I'm from KillCommonCore.com. I want to thank you for your clarity, however confusing it might be. I'm not paid to be here, I'm just here costing me money and costing me time. I have heard all kinds of arguments for clarity and confusion, and there's neither here. There's no clarity. Mr. White said, "We look to lawyers, legislators, administrators in charge of education." And not once out of his mouth did I hear the most important word as to who we refer to. He didn't refer to parents, not once. That's who controls education. And if we give our education to Common Core, parents will not be in control of education. People in Washington, DC, not in this state, will be in control of what is taught and how it is taught to our children. And that's why we have this fight. We're not fighting standards. We're fighting control. We're not in control of our children than the people in Washington, DC are in control of our children. And that's what we're fighting for. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
Lee Barrios, retired teacher from St. Tammany. As an English teacher, I particularly appreciated a journalist's recent attempt to portray all of this situation as ironic. And I too love the irony when people who owe their positions, and in some cases, fat paychecks to Governor Gindel's political power, now are claiming that he has no authority. The board questioned, questions the administration's legal prowess, and yet we've spent millions of dollars to use Governor Gindel's legal counsel. Clarity, the whole premise of Common Core and its testing regime is comparability. Let's face it, Park states will all have to use the same test produced by the same company. We now know, thanks to Dr. Schneider, that New Mexico represented Park in issuing a contract to Park, which is using Pearson on behalf of all the states. Did, does Superintendent White claim that he ever intended to purchase a test for the state of Louisiana? Several things that aren't true that I want to reiterate. It's not true that test questions aren't reused. It's not true that this year's test, or any LEAP test, was released to students' parents and teachers. In fact, students and teachers have to sign a legal affidavit when they take the test, swearing not to ever discuss the test. It is abundantly clear that we can't trust Superintendent White in any matter remotely related to test development, test administration, test analysis, school performance scores, awarding of taxpayer money as a result of those manipulated test scores and school performance scores. And I believe a full audit of the Department of Ed and RSC will, along with demonstrated history, support that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Reed. Patricia Terry. Accidentally said she did not want to speak previously. Patricia Terry. And, what is this? Constantine Deanna Long, or Constance Long? Louisiana Power Coalition? Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Reed. I'm 67, grandparent, father, chemical engineer, MBA, retired from corporate world. And I got involved politically a few years ago because of what's happening in this country. I'm speaking for myself today, not for the organization I represent. I've testified many times in the legislature, before the Senate, for a lot of people about Common Core. What I urge each of you, and many of you I supported for your election, which I will not support in the next election because of your actions with Common Core. In fact, I'll make it my objective to make sure you're not re-elected to your position on the BESI. What I'm going to do is tell you in one succinct couple of sentences what is wrong with Common Core and what I urge each of you, if you are patriotic Americans, to start doing. In 1958, it's called the Naked Communists. The 45 goals of the Communist Party was printed. Why not just read them? Do you know the ultimate goal is to take over the education system? Because why? It becomes the indoctrination center. We need to return, we need to return education to the absolute lowest level. That's the parents, the teacher, the principal, and the local school body. And you are doing everything against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Patricia Terry, and I'm with Louisiana Power Coalition. And I'm, we're in support of Governor Gindel's position on Park and Common Core. I wanted to bring to your attention today something that I don't think many people know about. Are you aware that the U.S. Department of Defense has stepped into our education system by giving $919,000 to two Bossier schools that are paying students $100 each for testing their score, if their scores are well? Teachers are being paid well and are being paid for training. At a time when our military is having commissaries closed and threats of pay cuts for soldiers because the U.S. Department of Defense has deep cuts, they give almost $1 million to two schools to influence the students and teachers. I'm very concerned about what is happening. And I believe that the tests that were given the previous year would be good to do for the upcoming year. And I support that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, and I apologize for skipping your name previously. The following individuals did not wish to speak, but wanted to have their name read into the record. Stacy Morgan is opposed to the recommendation. I believe I read Guy Terry previously as opposed to the recommendation. Deandre Hill in support of the recommendation. Destiny Nicole Prune, support of the recommendation. Mary Louise Phoenix in support of the recommendation. Christopher Garner, support of the recommendation. William Matthew Honi, support of the recommendation. Jade Brown, support of the recommendation. Cheryl Dupree, support of the recommendation. Dolores Bishop in support of the recommendation. Wayne Cola in support of the recommendation. Rachel Guidry in support of the recommendation. And then I have four other cards that also wanted to be read into. Rita Floberg opposing the recommendation. William Flauburg opposing the recommendation. Nita McNair oppose the recommendation. And Bill McNair oppose the recommendation. I appreciate everyone's patience, and I appreciate you being here and all the comments. Board members, we have received a report from the superintendent. We did have public discussion. I did say that I would entertain motions related to the item. I think we've reached that moment in regard to item 3.1.
And if we have a copy of the motion, if we could get this passed out, please.
Okay.
And members, I thank you all for the opportunity to make this motion today, and for members of the audience for being patient with us. I think one of the things, if I could just make a brief statement, I think one of the things that we all can agree on is that it would be a disservice to the 700,000 public school students that we have in this state to not have a plan when we leave here today that would at least bridge the gap while other discussions take place. As a former superintendent of schools, I know that you work all during the summer to prepare for the first day of school. And so therefore, at this time, if approved by the Division of Administration, because she did mention that she would like to do that, I move that the 2013-2014 assessment instruments continue to be used in the 2014-2015 school year to ensure continuity, consistency for all stakeholders. And with that, I move approval of this motion.
I second your motion.
There's a motion by Ms. Smith, and there is a second by Dr. Beebe. Is there discussion on the motion? Yes, Dr. Moranty.
Just for a clarification, were we deviating from this for this year? BESI, I mean, were we...
We were starting new assessments for this year.
That we would be using...
New assessments for 2014-15.
Yes, yes. Just to make sure that I'm clear. If this motion is to continue to use what we used last year, is that what BESI was looking to do this year? No.
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 Any other, yes, Dr. Beebe.
Yes, just for clarification and to respond to Superintendent White, you know, as we, you know, I did pull up the Louisiana Department of Ed website, and it says, "This year's LEAP and ILEAP assessments are fully aligned to the new expectations and are not aligned to the old LEAP standards." So we do have the rigor in place. And again, as it relates to his comment that the test items were released, I think that's subject to debate because, as I stated previously, my accountability person has informed me that she is unaware of those items being disseminated and available. So I just wanted that to be noted in the record.
Thank you, Dr. Beebe.
And yes, am I asking for a roll call vote?
Before you do, I still have an additional card. If we were not to continue doing what we did last year, what would we be doing this year?
We would be doing the new assessments as proposed.
That's already in place?
Yes.
We don't have a test.
The new, the plan is in place, the actual assessments. Where is the superintendent?
We don't have a test right now.
We start school in just a couple of weeks. What are we going to be testing with?
As planned, it was to be tested in the park, using the park test, as planned.
But I thought that was 2015.
That's 2014, 2015.
Since it's my motion, if I could clarify, as we stand right now, whether you agree or not, we don't have an assessment for next year because of the actions that's been taken. My motion would simply say that during the next year, school year, we would use the same assessment that we used last year. And whatever happens from there happens. But that would, I think, give a sense of continuity to the school districts. I don't think we can leave here today, colleagues, without making a decision about what we're going to do for next year. So with that, as I said, I ask for approval of my motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other questions? There's a motion on the table, and we'll take a roll call vote.
Dr. Beebe?
Yes.
Dr. Beebe votes yes. Ms. Boffey?
No.
Ms. Boffey votes no. Ms. Bradford? Ms. Bradford is not here. Mr. Garvey?
No.
Mr. Garvey votes no. Mr. Guio is absent. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill votes yes. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee is not here. Dr. Moranty?
For lack of clarity, I abstain.
Dr. Moranty abstains. Ms. Orange Jones? Ms. Orange Jones is not here. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith votes yes. Mr. Romer, do you care to vote?
It doesn't pass, does it?
No.
Okay. That motion fails. Is there any additional?
I just have a question. Because for me, this is a very critical issue. And we are leaders, and our constituents elected us or we were appointed to this position. Schools start in less than six to five weeks. The community is in uproar. They don't know how we're going to move forward. For me, this is not about, this is, it is not about politics for me. It's about doing right for our children. I believe the governor and the Department of Education, they can battle this issue out. But for me, we need to know what's going to take place this school year for our children. If not, it is unacceptable as board members to leave here today not assuring the community how to move forward. That's, I mean, I'm just, I just can't. So my question would be, how do we move? What are we going to do? President Chad Romer?
And Mr. President, for point of order, did the motion fail because she abstained?
It requires six yea votes to pass. Six yea votes.
Why does it require six?
Because a board, a board action requires six positive votes.
I disagree with that. I want, I want show me, somebody to show me that. This, this motion passed three to two.
No, a committee, no. I apologize. A committee, a committee action requires simple majority. A board action requires six positive votes. Okay.
Well, can we get a, can we go and, can we actually have someone else make a motion? Because I think I clarified that, and if Dr. Moranty needs further clarification, I think we can help her understand it. We don't have a test to begin the school year with, ladies and gentlemen of this committee?
The vote was taken.
All right. The vote, the vote was taken on that motion. Is there additional motion? Hearing none, next item.
The next item is item 3.2, consideration of the potential retention of special legal counsel regarding Executive Order Number BJ 2014-6, Executive Order Number BJ 2014-7, and related implementation.
So there is a motion, it will be to receive consideration of the potential retention of the special legal counsel.
Objection.
Point of order.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes.
Does anybody on this board have a resolution that we're?
Yeah, we're going to have a resolution.
Okay, why haven't we seen that?
We're doing that now. We're just getting to that item.
That's what's wrong with the procedural aspects of what's going on with the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. That's how we do business, and that's why the public has no trust in us. The statute clearly requires a resolution to hire special counsel. Who are we going to hire? Why are we discussing it? Why are we getting it now?
We're doing that now. Okay, we're doing that now.
Well, that's a poor way to do business.
And I think we should have a recess until that's completed.
And Mr. Chair, for point of clarification, didn't?
I will get to you, Dr. Beebe. One more second. All right. Members, there was actually not a vote to receive the report on item 3.1. Okay? But there was a motion and a second. Ms. Smith made a substitute motion, which failed, and so we have to reconsider receiving item 3.1. So there is a motion to receive item 3.1, and there's a second. Is there any objection to receiving the report on item 3.1?
I have a point of order.
This is, this is, the point of order is we're on item 3.1, it was to receive the item. There's a motion and a second. Is there any objection to receiving the report?
I object.
One objection.
Okay. I have a question because some board members were not in attendance when we did an issue motion from Ms. Smith. Can we have a recall vote or reconsider?
If someone?
Because at least give everyone the opportunity because Ms. Jones was not here, Ms. Bradford wasn't present.
We'll do, let me see what the vote required for motion to reconsider, and we can do that, Ms. Hill, okay? I'll tell you what I'll, I will do. I will allow a reconsideration of item 3.1 with a simple majority vote. Okay?
Mr. Romer?
Yes.
I think maybe we were not having, we didn't have a quorum when we voted. I think we may have a quorum now.
We did have a quorum when we voted, yes.
Mr.?
We're trying to see how many votes is required for reconsideration.
Okay, and let me just make a point of this. We have been sitting here since 11:30, and a vote this important, to not have members present, I find very upsetting. They ought to all be in here to vote, whatever way they vote. We're not considering that many items today, so I beg that you reconsider. If we lose, on my part, we lose, but I think all of them should be in here to vote.
Mr. Chair, I want to tell Ms. Smith that I take objection to that. Been sitting for three hours, had no idea how long it was going on. I took a break to run out to the bathroom.
That's why we probably should have given you time to get back to your seat before we voted.
I'm only waiting to see how many votes is required for reconsideration, okay?
So what do we do? What do we do?
I'm going to allow, I believe, I believe a simple majority is required for reconsideration. So we have a motion for reconsideration. Does anybody object to reconsideration? Hearing none. We'll reconsider on item 3.1 if Ms. Smith would care to make her motion again.
And I still have a question about whether it takes six votes to do this. Is there an attorney anywhere that has board experience that I could call? Danny Garrett? It takes six? Okay. So my motion is, and I think we need to, that, needed to have that clarification. My motion is, if approved by the Division of Administration, I move that the 2013-14 assessment instruments continue to be used, that'd be the status quo, continue to be used in the 2014-2015 school year to ensure continuity, consistency for all stakeholders.
And I second and ask for roll call.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the superintendent about the possibility, capability, whatever the right choice of word would be about making this happen.
I think I'd need greater specificity as to what it, what exactly the testing instrument means, to be honest. I don't really know what that means.
Well, if we, if we maintain status quo, that would be the LEAP and ILEAP that we use this year.
You mean you would like there to be the exact same questions on every test?
No, no.
So which, which questions would it be?
I think we have the ability in this state to pull questions together and fill that data bank, field test it in the fall, and be ready to test in the spring without a problem.
So you would like to use our current contract to subcontract with another vendor?
I said if approved by the Division of Administration.
I think it would cost, our estimate is roughly $3 million additional beyond what is currently budgeted. I also think that it is probably unlikely to be within the bounds of the law because it is not either measuring the standards or comparable. And third, I think it is unlikely to be delivered in a time when, by the time which teachers could fairly say that they know what it, what it is, thus not only precipitating chaos but precipitating lawsuits where people are being evaluated and such based on tests that they have never seen before. So in answer to your question, do I think it is technically possible to develop new questions by way of a new vendor for delivery by April of next year? It's probably possible. Frankly, I don't know how exactly it differs from what our plan is already, other than that our plan doesn't cost any more money and it is done on time. In other words, our plan is by way of a, as you say, bringing together questions at no additional cost, and teachers already have known about what those questions are over six months.
But we don't have a test in place right now, and that's what I'm trying to, to solve. We don't have a test in place.
I think we have it much more in place than your plan does, ma'am.
We don't have a test in place.
I believe we do. We have a testing vendor.
Well, I disagree with you. We don't have a, we don't have a method to purchase the test because of the, there was no RFP.
That's, that is, that is not correct, and I apologize, I can't let that pass. It's been said.
Well, I can't let it pass, Superintendent. I can't let it pass that you sit here and say that the teachers in this state are not able to put together a field test in the fall and be ready for the spring, and that would be the solution for this year while whatever happens in the future happens with an RFP and everything included.
I would suggest, I would suggest that the board endorsing a plan that costs millions of dollars that was not budgeted.
The appropriations committee would disagree with you on that.
There is no line in our budget for additional testing fees. Secondly.
We're going to save money probably by not using Park.
Secondly, the timing of all of this that you're describing, to procure additional questions, to field test them, to score them on the field test, to create the test forms, to publish them, to train the teachers on them, would be, it just goes on and on and on. And I guess, members, you know, to be honest, I feel like this is all indicative of a problem that we have, which is that the dialogue over the last year has vastly understated the complexity of this enterprise because it's been running for years, and it hasn't changed so much as we're asking it to change. But you, as I've said this before, you don't just change the testing regime and the questions without years of preparation. It took us four years to prepare these test questions. Why do you think it would take a matter of weeks to prepare other ones? This is wrong.
So what, so if you, if we file suit, I won't vote to do that, but if we file suit, what is your plan? We have no plan while litigation goes on. Before we take this vote, since Ms. Bradford was allowed to call someone, I'd like to ask Scott Richard to come. I think he could tell you that we can do this in this state, and if he would be allowed to come to the table, I think he deserves the right to speak to that.
Let me say just a couple, to answer the question, what is my plan? First of all, as I've said before, whether you undertake Ms. Smith's plan or whether you undertake our plan, I can tell you it's going to be further delayed by the fact that we're going to be back here in two months because we don't have clarity as to who makes decisions. Let me tell you why. Our interpretation is that under the law, any test questions should be Common Core questions. The administration just sent a bunch of letters out recalling Common Core from Louisiana. We're going to have a fundamental disagreement unless we get clarity on what types of questions and who can make that decision. And it doesn't matter whether it's Plan A or Plan B. Let me also just make a prediction. If you call Mr. Richard up here, and he is very knowledgeable about these issues.
He sure is.
He will give you the fact that in the past, tests have been field tested in Louisiana in the fall. Members, never has an entire test across six grade levels been field tested. Sure, we field tested some questions. We've not field tested every English and math question for every grade level in elementary and middle school before in the fall.
We don't have a contract right now, but anyway, Mr. Richard?
I understand the, I understand the tensions around all these decision makers. I understand people's not having a desire to ask an outside body for clarity. I don't think anybody's talking about suing someone. I think people are talking about seeking clarity.
That's usually why you hire an attorney.
However, I'm telling you, we cannot proceed with either Ms. Smith's plan, which I wouldn't recommend, or another plan until we have clarity. And there's nothing wrong about saying that.
Okay, Superintendent Romer?
Yeah, I'm going to go, Dr. Moranty.
I think we would be doing a great disservice to our state if we go backwards. We cannot go backwards.
You're not counting the status quo.
And if we have in place something that will measure what our teachers have been working so hard on for these past four years, how can we, as a Bessie board, say that we're going to let you down now, go back and not go forward with our?
Please, audience, audience, I, I, please, we've had a, one, one second. The audience has gotten a little bit loud.
But I'm telling you, this is not right. This is not right for our children. It's not fair to our teachers. I think we need to go forward, not backward.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman? This is a point of order. We have a lot of debate going on, but I don't think we finished voting on whether to reconsider the issue that's being debated. I think we, we need to vote on whether to reconsider the issue before we can start debating.
There was no objection.
Yeah, she made a motion, and I said?
There was no objection.
There was no objection.
Our staff has that now? Okay, good, thank you.
There was no objection. Yes, Ms. Hill?
Well, Ms., Dr. Moranty, I don't think that we're going backwards. According to Superintendent White, according to the website, LDOE website, and I believe Ms. Dr. Beebe read off the website, the LEAP exam that has taken place this year was modified to align with the Common Core standards. So meaning that the test that the students had taken this year was more rigorous than the test that they had taken previous years with the LEAP and ILEAP. So if we continue this year and say, hey, for the 2014-2015 school year, we're going to? we're gonna use the same exact exam, I'm not gonna say same exact, but the exam that was in place for this year for next year, our children won't be going backwards, they will be moving forward. But the most important thing is for me is that we have heard our constituents, we have heard our educators, we have heard our parents, we have heard the school board, the experts, and they're saying, slow down, wait. This is our children's future ahead of us. And so with that, we should, as a Board, allow those parties to battle the issue out in the courts. But for us, we need to know how to move forward. And this is my concern. What if, what if the Department and the Governor's Office, they get into the courtroom and the judge say, hey, no more Park? Then what we're gonna do? We right back at square one. So with that, moving forward to allow the districts, at least they can know how to move forward for the upcoming school year, our parents and our educators, let's allow the test that was in place this year, which was modified, to move forward for the upcoming school year. I think that's the best approach.
Dr....
I'll be brief, but just to reiterate, Superintendent White, you are the State Superintendent of Education. You need to be the leader, and we have a proposal before you, we have a plan. Again, Ms. Hill articulated what happens if. Our educators need certainty, and you know, we need to focus on our students. We're talking about, you know, taking steps backwards. If we had taken the time initially to develop a plan that could be sustainable, but we were in such a hurry to move forward with education reform, our students will be the victims, and when we, we've heard parents' testimony today saying they're going to homeschool their children. You know, we need to get this right, and then let, again, let your department, let the Governor's Department, you can hash it out in the courts if you will, but our teachers need a plan. I don't care if it's A, B, C, D, but we need a plan and we need to move forward expediently.
Thank you. Ms. Richard, I'll let you come down.
Thank you, President. Romer Scott Richard, Executive Director of Louisiana School Boards Association. In no attempt do I want any of my comments to appear to be controversial. This is, this is the same vein of commentary as provided earlier. A practical solution needs to be sought. The hours of debate we've heard today, it appears as if there is no practical solution. We've suggested a practical solution to ensure some level of continuity for our districts when they start school. The testing series that was utilized last school year are fully aligned to Common Core, as indicated on the Department's website. If you go to Common Core Frequently Asked Questions, it's plain as day. Those documents can be provided. Is it the best-case scenario for our students in Louisiana? Absolutely not. But from a practical standpoint, from an educator's standpoint, we feel as a School Boards Association, in conjunction with the local superintendents across our state, in making this recommendation earlier to you, we have no control over the legal battles that appear to be forming, and we would... That's not our fight, the legal issues. Our fight every day is to make sure we start school from now until school starts with a plan, with a clear path forward, as we've indicated before. In discussions with Superintendent White, we've talked about the possibility of utilizing the same series of assessments, and as he indicated earlier, will it be easy? No. But is it possible? Yes. That is why we continue to advocate for that process moving forward. To come here today and debate legal issues, which is within your purview, is absolutely, obviously, what you feel you need to do. But from the practical perspective of local school people, local school systems, principals, administrators, central office staff, teachers, parents, we need to know what assessment we're gonna use moving forward. It would not be a step back, with all due respect to Ms. Maranti, because these assessments are of higher rigor and are aligned to higher standards. We don't want to get into that debate over Common Core and the merits of Common Core and Park. We're asking for a clear delineation of where we need to go from here. Not another special meeting, not a regularly scheduled meeting in August to make a decision, not waiting on the courts to decide. It's incumbent upon you all, we feel, and directly related to what's responsible for the over 700,000 students in our state, to set forth a plan today to move forward. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you may have.
I do have one, sir.
Yes, Dr. Maranti.
So what you're saying is that if we use the test that we use, we would be measuring the standards. Why are those, why are we not looking at that for right now, Board members? Those who are not for maintaining this status quo for this year? What is the argument against doing this if we're not going backwards? I need to hear it.
Well, if I may, it's on the Department of Ed website that the items are aligned with Park. And they're rigorous.
So let's talk it through, okay? Let's talk through what we're actually talking about here. First, I do want to say this because I think this can get lost. The reality is that we have had a four-year plan that could not have been clearer as to what next year's test will look like until administrative action was taken to essentially create this dialogue. So I wanted to say this, not for any matter of politics, but just as a technical issue. The best way to get clarity would be for the Administration to not have used their contractual oversight power to interfere with the classrooms of our state. We would not be here if the Commissioner would simply reverse her decision and allow us to move forward. So, how to make sure that we do move forward? Because this is, as Mr. Richard and Dr. Maranti identify, a tenuous time. I would imagine that they won't do that. So the question is, one, we think we should seek very immediate clarity from the courts as to how it is that that is achieved. We have to seek clarity, and it has to come fast. Because, not because I don't agree with what, with what Mr. Richard, with Dr. Beebe, with Ms. Hill, with what they have to say, and Ms. Smith. I agree with their identification of the problem, but here's where it comes in, Dr. Maranti. What is the solution? One, we could repackage a group of tests, questions, that have already been advertised to our entire state for weeks online. I've sent emails to thousands of people. Our superintendent's email last week referred to this. It was announced in a press release a month and a half ago that we would be releasing these test questions, and there they are, on the website, seen. So how do we use those? We don't. So we develop new test questions, ostensibly through a different vendor or someone else, as Ms. Smith said, we assemble them from somewhere else. That takes months. And it does nothing different from what the Administration is already saying that we've done wrong, which is to say that we find ourselves in a very difficult box, and I understand what Mr. Richard is saying. I wish we weren't in that box. The best I can tell you, I don't want to create the false illusion we can do something we can't, which is to create a new test at no cost with no time constraint that meets the law's requirements. Not gonna happen. So don't try to make something happen that sounds good but isn't real. Let's get the clarity we need to guide us on any path. Clarity might say Plan A is fine. Clarity might say you need a Plan B. At least it will give us a roadmap that right now, given the dispute between the groups, there is no way of executing safely together.
I think your motion says what she's asking.
So let's say in December, we get a response from the courts, and we, we, you know, we didn't do the proper procurement. Then what does that do for educators and students, first and foremost for our students? So...
I think you should, the good news is we meet regularly. So you have regular opportunities as the process proceeds to weigh in on this. Look, I am the fir, I gave a speech last week, two weeks ago, about how I think that this is unconscionable, that we've been put in this position, that our schools and school boards, Mr. Richard, have been put in this position, that our kids have been put in this position. I gave a speech about how unconscionable it is for last-minute switches and changing standard tests.
That's right, and you are party to it. You are party to it.
If we had done an RFP, we wouldn't be here today.
We need to resolve this, Superintendent White. Be the leader that you were hired to be. And let's have an immediate solution for the start of school. I receive emails from educators, from parents throughout the state. Superintendent, we need a resolution today.
I couldn't agree more, and that's why we need to ask for clarity. It is easy to say, it is easy for you to say that we need a plan, that we need resolution. But every plan that has been proposed is not workable and takes us backwards. We need clarity to tell us how to proceed. I wish we weren't at this point, but we are.
Superintendent White, how long would the clarity take? Would it take a week, two weeks, a month, three months? I mean, how long?
First, we may, that is part of the reason we need to get counsel immediately to determine exactly what path might be chosen. Okay, that's the whole point. Because this was not created, this chaos was not created by this Board or this Superintendent.
Oh, it was. It was.
Let's be clear.
It was. There's no RFP.
Let me finish. I've been very patient listening. This Board, on multiple occasions, has voted to continue down this path, along with the legislature of this state, okay? And we have been following their laws and our policies without exception. And it was not actions taken by this Board or this Superintendent that has us here today. Okay, let's be clear. And if he wants, if we want an RFP process, we need to go get clarity on who gets to determine the quality and the content of that RFP because this Governor has weighed in and said he doesn't want Common Core and he doesn't want Park. Now, I want to know how you can have a fair process if that's already out in the public. We need to go find out from the courts who has the authority to make that decision. And the Constitution says that authority rests with us. The Division of Administration has a different opinion. Guess what we're gonna go do? We're gonna find out what the judge thinks, okay? And we're gonna find out quickly.
Mr. Romer, then I think that... I think this motion then is premature. I think we have to seek the clarity and then come back and then give our... We need to then be able to say what we're gonna be doing.
So we have, we have a motion, though, on the table, and we have a second. That motion was Ms. Smith's motion. I'm gonna call for a roll call vote.
And let me just make one comment.
Yes.
If we wait until the courts decide, if y'all have checked lately, the courts don't operate very quickly. We're gonna be at Christmas before we'll have a decision, probably. But anyway, with that said, my motion, I ask favorable passage.
Dr. Beebe?
Yes.
Dr. Beebe votes yes. Ms. Bofe?
No.
Ms. Bofe votes no. Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Bradford votes no. Mr. Garvey?
No.
Mr. Garvey votes no. Mr. Guio is not present. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill votes yes. Mr. Lee is not present. Dr. Maranti?
No.
Dr. Maranti votes no. Ms. Orange Jones?
No.
Ms. Orange Jones votes no. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith votes yes. Mr. Romer, do you care to vote?
I'm voting no.
Mr. Romer votes no. The motion fails.
So we now need a motion to receive item 3.1.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Is there objection to receiving item 3.1? Hearing none. Motion 3.1 is received. Item 3.2, Mr. Superintendent...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Bradford.
I would just like to say to the Superintendent, whereas I do want clarity on this issue, at the same time, I do think we need to be in preparation and that the teachers do need to have some sense of...
She says it.
Have some sense of the fact that there is a plan that will be worked on and that they should proceed as we would normally.
Board members, you have my assurance, and I am happy to deliver a report in the intervening weeks as to the development of contingency plans in the event that, as Ms. Smith alludes to, the court takes a significant period of time. I should say, as you can imagine, we have been anticipating for some time that the Governor would make the kind of announcement he did two weeks ago. A lot of our plans were on hold pending whatever edict the Governor was going to issue. Now that we have some sense of what the concerns are, we're going to move forward with the development of a set of ideas, and we will certainly pass those by you as quickly as we can.
I just have a question for Superintendent White.
Yes.
Maybe he can, I mean, elaborate. What about the consequences for the districts? If we move forward fully with Park, I mean, with the Park assessment, what will be the consequences for the districts in regards to, we know the test is, the rigor of the test and school districts, I mean, everything's in limbo, and say come in December, the courts rule in the Governor's favor. What about the districts? How will we, I mean, how will we measure their success? School performance scores, I mean?
As I mentioned, the determination by the Administration to suspend the contracts has placed a lot in jeopardy. Those are things that it places in jeopardy, for example. However, now that we understand what the circumstances of their ruling or their edicts were, we're in a better position to at least begin developing contingency plans. Those contingency plans involve, however, looking at our budget, looking at what sort of the issues that they have are specifically. And I think therefore, we are just in the process of developing those alternatives now that we understand what their, what their issues are. We're clear, we're going to communicate with you in the next weeks to ensure that you're aware of what our contingency options could be. At the same time, proceeding with clarity is important so that when we get to a point of having to execute either Plan A or any other plan, we know whose roles, who's playing the right roles.
And would that be articulated to the districts? Because I'm quite sure school districts are concerned. I mean, they don't know what assessment is gonna be used, how they're gonna be measured, you know, what the formula is gonna be as far as their school performance scores, schools that may be on a, you know, verge of maybe jeopardize a failing, I mean, state takeover. I mean, it's so much you have here.
I couldn't agree more. I mean, this is an unprecedented action and an unprecedented circumstance. Thus, we are figuring out what our options are. We will make you fully aware of what potential contingency plans, to Ms. Bradford's point, are possible as we hopefully pursue clarity that gives us some sense of the roles and responsibilities. I don't think that's an either-or, and we'll be pursuing hopefully both.
Thank you. Members, we're on item 3.2, which is consideration of retention of special legal counsel. For some background, I will provide some background, and maybe the Superintendent will add to my background. We have been working since the Governor's executive orders on different scenarios that this Board may have to consider, this being one of them. We have consulted with the Attorney General's Office as to the form that we need to take in terms of a resolution and the steps that we need to take in order to seek approval from the AG's office, which is what would end up happening, I'm giving a layman's term. We can read the resolution word for word in a second. But the resolution, in essence, would be seeking approval from the Attorney General's Office for Bessie to retain counsel to seek relief or clarity on these executive orders. Now, the AG's office has some options, and there's a representative here if you have a question about that option. They could, they could reject our request and say that they're gonna represent us themselves. They could accept our request and the counsel that we recommend. They could reject the counsel that we recommend and require a different counsel. And I believe I've stated that correctly. So this resolution will start that process of going to the AG and seeking that approval. So that's the background. We have worked with the AG's office on this resolution to make sure the wording is done properly. Perhaps we can read, pass out the resolution and read it into the record. And Superintendent, I don't know if you feel like that needs any clarity?
Mr. Romer, I have a question. As per the request of Ms. Smith... As per the request of Ms. Smith at a previous meeting, why didn't we receive this copy of the resolution prior to today?
They were working up on it until yesterday. We have gone, working with the AG's office consistently to get it right, or maybe even today, correct. So I do apologize for that, but this was, again, kind of thrust upon us, and we've done our best to get prepared for this. So I will ask Ms. Cope to read the resolution into the record.
Question?
I've only got four extras. John, can you get a rest? Okay. Members, in front of you is a draft resolution titled "Resolution Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education," and it begins, and please bear with me, it's quite lengthy. "A resolution to obtain the services of [blank], which would be filled in by a law firm or law firm's name, as special legal counsel, subject to the approval of the Louisiana Attorney General, to pursue legal remedies on behalf of the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding recent actions by Governor Jindal and the Division of Administration, among others, as it pertains to the academic assessment program for Louisiana public school students. Whereas, the Louisiana Constitution in Article 8, Section 3 confers upon the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education the authority to supervise and control the public elementary and secondary schools in Louisiana. Whereas, Louisiana Revised Statute 1724.4 requires the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to establish statewide content standards and implement the Louisiana competency-based education program and Louisiana educational assessment program for public school students. Whereas, Louisiana Revised Statute 1724.4 requires that, beginning with the 2014-15 school year, standards-based assessments implemented by the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in English Language Arts and Mathematics shall be based on nationally recognized content standards. Whereas, in 2010, the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education adopted the Common Core state standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics for Louisiana public schools. Whereas, in 2010, Louisiana joined a consortium of states named the Partnership for the Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers (PARK), pursuant to an agreement signed by Governor Jindal, the President of the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Louisiana State Superintendent of Education for the purpose of developing and implementing an assessment system to measure student knowledge and skills against a common set of college and career-ready standards in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Whereas, the agreement pursuant to which Louisiana joined the PARK Consortium explicitly states that a member state can terminate its participation in the consortium only by a written notice signed by the individuals holding the same positions as the individuals who sign the agreement, which for Louisiana is the Governor of Louisiana, the President of the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the State Superintendent of Education. Whereas, the Chief Procurement Officer for the Louisiana Office of State Purchasing within Governor Jindal's administration signed an addendum to the PARK agreement in which she confirmed by her signature dated June 10, 2010, that, quote, "Louisiana may, consistent with the procurement laws and regulations of Louisiana, participate in the consortium procurement process, processes, excuse me, described in this addendum 3," end quote, to the PARK agreement. Whereas, the addendum to the PARK agreement allows Louisiana to participate in the consortium procurement process. However, the Louisiana Department of Education has instead chosen to continue to utilize its existing testing contracts, which were, in fact, competitively bid. Such contracts provide a variety of services, and the tests these vendors assemble, deliver, collect, score, analyze, and report on will include some PARK content and some content acquired through other means. Whereas, by letter dated June 28, 2013, the Director of Louisiana's Office of Contractual Review approved an amendment to the Louisiana Department of Education's contract with Data Recognition Corporation for additional test development to ensure better alignment of state assessments with the Common Core state standards through updates and modifications to the current test forms as created by Data Recognition Corporation through said contract. Whereas, on June 18, 2014, Governor Jindal issued Executive Order Number BJ 2014-7 pursuant to which the governor purported unilaterally to overrule the decision of the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to contract with certain assessment vendors and prohibit the implementation of the PARK assessment in Louisiana. Whereas, on June 18, 2014, the Director of Louisiana's Office of Contractual Review at the direction of Governor Jindal's Commissioner of Administration issued a letter to the Louisiana Department of Education, an administrative arm of the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, purporting unilaterally to suspend the Louisiana Department of Education's contracts with Data Recognition Corporation for the development and administration of standardized assessments for Louisiana's public school students. Only a few more paragraphs. Whereas, Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education believes that aforementioned actions of Governor Jindal and his administration to be beyond the scope of their legal authority and to be, among other things, an unconstitutional attempt by Governor Jindal and his administration to usurp the authority conferred upon the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education by the Louisiana Constitution and statutory law. Whereas, the Louisiana Attorney General and the Louisiana Department of Justice provide legal representation of state governmental officers, agencies, and boards, including the Governor of Louisiana and the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Whereas, a conflict of interest may exist for the Louisiana Attorney General and Department of Justice in representing both the Governor of Louisiana and the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and the matters referenced. Therefore, be it resolved that the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education does hereby authorize its officers to retain the firms of [blank], which are to be determined, subject to the approval of the Louisiana Attorney General, to represent the board's interests and to take legal steps necessary to obtain clarification and resolution regarding the matters referenced in this resolution and matters related thereto. Be it further resolved that the representation of whatever law firm be provided to the Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education on a pro bono basis. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the Louisiana Attorney General.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. As I recollect, when I was Superintendent of Schools and we hired special counsel and we had a resolution, we didn't, we didn't vote on a resolution when we had no name of the attorney or the firm.
We're going to provide, we're going to provide names.
And even if it's pro bono, we still have to have a name before the, before the Louisiana Attorney General approves it. We need that name in that legislation.
I agree. We will, and, and...
Why isn't it there now?
Because we didn't know if we were going to get to the resolution, and we didn't want to put law firm names in there. If we didn't, this board could have taken different action.
It was on the agenda.
So, but this board could have taken different action, and we're not going to put the law firm names in there until we're ready to take action. And that will be done before you take a vote. Okay? And the Attorney General has the option to either approve or disapprove of that counsel.
And are you going to include the call? Or is it pro bono?
It's pro bono. For this.
We have to discuss the law firms in the meeting before we could write them in, because we can't decide to give something to somebody.
Excuse me? In the meeting?
Well, in this meeting. We have to discuss the potential law firms.
Thank you.
In this meeting.
So we are thinking about a constitutional?
There's two firms, and Mr. Garvey will present the names. One firm is a local firm that is very familiar with the courts here, has tried cases up into the Supreme Court of the United States. That's Price Gordon. The second firm is a constitutional, has much more constitutional knowledge, but they're not based in this district. They're based in New Orleans, and they will provide the constitutional work while the Baton Rouge attorney is more familiar with the local courts. Again, the first firm is Price Gordon, and you've been handing out information regarding them. And the second firm is Barasso, Uzden, Kupperman, Freeman, and Sarver. Again, this is subject to approval of the Attorney General. It is pro bono. It is a very complicated task, as we've gone through this, to determine how to even retain counsel on Bessie. We had to figure out that you have to request that from the Attorney General. We had to determine what the fee would be, if any, and that would have to be presented to the Attorney General. And we have to provide the potential counsel's name for the Attorney General's approval. Yes, Ms. Bradford?
So, Mr. Chair, I'm just in a very sticky wicket.
I understand.
And I am not in favor of suing the governor.
Well, that's what you're going to do if you vote for this.
Ms. Smith, if you would let me have my time, I'd greatly appreciate it.
I'm not in favor of suing him.
And so...
Well, that's what you're doing.
No.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
If y'all will let Ms. Bradford finish, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Is there not some way to get a declaratory ruling without having a suit?
Without having a suit? I mean, that is part of the reason why we need counsel, okay? You talk about being in a sticky wicket. We don't have counsel to tell us how we could get remedy and clarity. So we need counsel to make sure we know how to get clarity and remedy. Yes.
This is not necessarily going to answer your question, but I hope it's at least helpful. Perhaps what, what Ms. Bradford is suggesting is that in petitioning a court, rather than, say, what we typically refer to as a lawsuit, where someone is saying, "I'm suing an individual for damages." Instead, the mission of seeking clarity that we've been articulating over the course of the last several hours is one that is more served through a declaratory judgment by a court. And I recognize that doesn't necessarily get you entirely through your distinction, but at least it gives some sense as to what exactly the mission of seeking clarity means and how it ends up playing out. It doesn't end up playing out in a lawsuit where you say, "I need to get X back from you because you've damaged me in this way." It is simply a judgment, and I don't believe the scope of this to be necessarily beyond that. Mr. Garvey?
Yeah, Superintendent, along those lines, I think you're familiar with the motion. Does this motion commit us to filing the kind of suit that Ms. Bradford is concerned about?
I don't believe that it does. As I, as I read the resolution, the resolution says, "To represent the board's interest and take legal steps necessary to obtain clarification and resolution." I recognize the concern, and I don't, I don't want to diminish it. Unfortunately, in seeking clarity, we are either seeking it from an officer of the court or, you know, that seems like the one truly resolvable solu, viable solution.
If we, if we seek a declaratory judgment, do we name an opponent in the suit? Do we name a defendant in, in that kind of an action?
I believe you would have to, because there would have to be some party who had ostensibly created the transgression against which you're seeking the declaratory judgment. But I'm not an attorney, and we would, again, need an attorney to advise on that question.
And again, this motion does not commit us to doing that anyway. Is your understanding?
Yes, absolutely my understanding, yes, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Beebe?
Okay, Superintendent White, is the, this arrangement a request? The action we take, is it authorizing the special counsel to the suit if necessary? In other words, are we approving this group?
We are. Dr. Beebe, we are recommending to the AG that this is our selected counsel. The AG would have to approve it, though, or could choose other counsel or choose to represent us himself.
And so you, you've spoken to this group to see if they are indeed interested in, in...
They offered, they offered to represent us pro bono.
Interesting.
So I'm just trying...
Are they on the board? I'm sorry.
I'm trying to seek clarity here. So by voting for this resolution, we are, we are obligated to a lawsuit. Are we obligated to information?
I believe we're obligated to information. I mean, we are in a...
And so before we, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Go ahead, no.
So before we would have a lawsuit, it would come back to this body?
No, not as written, okay? So that's something to consider.
That's a problematic issue.
And that means, let's walk through this real quick.
Okay.
Okay? That is one of the difficulties of operating with a board, is that we don't meet every day. And we've all argued that timeliness is critical. So as written, the board officers are authorized to represent the board with the counsel. Now, there are alternatives to that, to that way of writing it. That's how it's been done in the past in terms of board officers representing the board's position. And that's how this is written, only for the sake of not having to call a meeting every time we take a different potential step in the process. That's the, that's the thought behind it.
Mr. President, may I?
I would say this was a pretty major step, that perhaps it would warrant board member involvement.
Sure. Mr. White? I was simply going to clarify that the letter of the resolution, as it currently reads, actually authorizes the officers to retain the counsel and thus the officers to make decisions with the counsel as well.
No, no, no.
Correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
Mr. Romer?
Yes. Ms. Smith?
So...
So are we just saying...
Excuse me, Dr. Winkler. Thank you, call them. That's okay. In looking at this, so a vote to hire special counsel is going to actually give that counsel, that special counsel, the authority to file suit if necessary and basically say that the action taken by the governor was, was defective?
I'm not certain what they will conclude and how they would argue.
But if they choose to, they can go right ahead and file suit.
Yes.
So a vote, I want to make this clear, a vote, ladies and gentlemen, on this board to hire counsel would be to allow them to move forward with litigation against the governor. So you have to make your own decision about that.
Now, I will clarify one thing. The council themselves can't make that decision.
Right.
Okay? They can recommend it to the board officers, as this is written. Okay, so that is...
Board officers?
Yeah, as this is written, yes.
Y'all better be careful.
And again, the only, and I understand that contention, the only issue there is timeliness, is if decisions have to be made...
Three people?
That can be modified, but if decisions have to be made, sometimes they do have to be made timely. And you see the difficulty in getting a quorum and getting a meeting. It is, let me say this, it is a very awkward way of a board to have to go through, I will admit.
It is, it is very disturbing to me, especially as we're near the Fourth of July. I don't want to give my freedom speech, but I'm concerned about three members being able to decide if an attorney who's working pro bono, which I'm assuming will not be paid by any other firms, and we're going to let three people decide if we're going to file suit, but all of the board will vote today to hire that attorney that gives them the authority. I am very disturbed about that.
So, Mr. Romer?
Well, let me, let me say, if I may. What the board is saying is it wants clarity.
I get that.
And it is, and it is a legal, there are legal questions to be determined, okay? And there's no other way around that. I wish perhaps there were, but there's no other way around that. And for us to seek legal remedy, we need legal counsel. I don't know another way to do it. And that's why we're here today. It's because, let me be clear, I represented this board on the policies our board has passed. That's what I've done, okay? We reached a point, and the Superintendent and I had these conversations, the reason we're here now is we had reached a point where that authority was no longer vested in me, okay? That's why, look, I'm not excited about this, but I felt like I did need to come to this board and say, "I've gone representing this board about as far as I can in this process." And now, if it's this board's decision to seek clarity, the only way this board can do that is to get counsel. Okay, Dr. Beebe, it's always...
Okay, so once the decision is rendered, does the governor's office and Division of Administration, can they appeal the decision? Because then again, the concern communicated, we may not get the decision until December, then if it's on appeal, and, you know, it goes on and on, so...
As I said, I will, we are just dealing with the ramifications of the governor's and the commissioner's unprecedented actions. So we will, I'm sorry.
The statute of law was not adhered to. It's not the governor, it's this department.
Ma'am, ma'am, nothing that has surfaced this afternoon has indicated any violation, including of the agreement that the governor signed in the Park situation in 2010. That being the case, that being the case, I will advise this board on, as we sort through the issues raised by the governor's actions, how there are other options to proceed ahead. However, my, my guidance to you is, given the dealings that we're having right now, no matter what plan we have, it's going to be greatly impeded without there being clarity. We're going to be back at this table. We can seek both at the same time, and will, but we're starting the process of seeking clarity.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, let me, could I offer a suggestion and then a motion, if we could just get the board to maybe think about this? Why don't we table this motion to hire outside counsel and ask the governor, his attorney, our attorney, and Superintendent White to sit down together and try to resolve this without litigation? I mean, we're big boys and girls. And, and, and report back to us on June 15th or June 17th. I mean, we, we are big boys and girls, and they can meet and decide, and I think you should have already had... have already happened, I'm telling you, I think it should have already happened. We are put in a precarious situation, but I would make that substitute motion that we instruct the superintendent, our attorney that we have now, legal counsel for the governor and the governor to sit down and work this out and report back to us.
Point of order about that question is, can't we do that, and while working on the original motion, if the original motion passes, can't we do what Ms. Smith is saying she would like us to do?
I see no reason why not. I see no reason why not. Let me also just advise the board, because I think something was just said was inaccurate. I, myself, have met with senior staff in the governor's office on this topic many times over the course of the last several months. I recognize that it was represented that I had not spoken about the particulars of a procurement arrangement with the commissioner of administration as recently as, say, the last several weeks or a month ago. I'm assuming you can imagine awaiting an order from the governor, which was no secret to anybody regarding procurement, that I was going to await that order before engaging with the administration. However, I have spoken on many occasions over the course of the last several months with the senior-most staff in the governor's office and have been assured at every stage that there was no interest in any outcome from that office, other than the eradication of the Common Core state standards and of the Park test questions in Louisiana.
Well...
Yes, Ms. Smith?
With all due respect, there is one person that we haven't, since you've talked about senior-level staff, Stafford came to mind. She's been in those meetings. I would call her to the table and let's talk about this before we proceed any further.
Stafford, I don't believe, Ms. Palmieri, I don't believe that, there you go.
Stafford Palmieri with the governor's office. Thank you, Ms. Smith, for calling me to the table. All I would say is this. We have called on Superintendent White to come up with a Plan B that follows the procurement code of the state of Louisiana, which I didn't write and Mrs. Nichols didn't write and our executive counsel didn't write, the legislature wrote. And for him to follow that law would involve a transparent procurement process. And as Ms. Nichols indicated earlier, when the Park discussion started in 2010 and when the contracts for DRC were submitted for amendments in that process, there was email communication between DOA and DOE regarding a competitive process that would happen when we got to the final step. There hasn't been that competitive process. And so all that this discussion has been about is about following the law, and the law is very clear. It is not about, and there has been some discussion, about whether or not the governor controls the content of our state assessments or the content of our state standards. That is not what this discussion is about. This discussion is about following the procurement law and ensuring that the public has a transparent competitive bidding process when it comes to making important decisions for the state of Louisiana. And that is it.
Ms. Palmieri, how do you reconcile, I don't want this to be hostile, how do you reconcile the governor's statements, and perhaps you can't speak for him, and I understand if you don't care, of taking these steps, remove us from Park and remove us from Common Core? Because we've made a policy decision that that is, in fact, what we're going to do, is pursue Common Core, and the legislature has confirmed that. How do you reconcile those differences?
So I would say that the steps that have been taken were the result of our having, as Superintendent White has indicated, some conversations with Superintendent White at the senior staff level about the pathway forward, having a disagreement of opinion on what that pathway forward was. And so we took steps that we thought were necessary to ensure that there would be a public process, in particular on the assessment that would be used in the 2014-15 school year and moving forward.
But let's be clear, real quick, was the conversation really about procurement or was it about Common Core and Park?
The conversation was about ensuring that there was a public process.
It was about Common Core and Park. Now, what we've done is we found...
You asked me a question that you just answered yourself.
We found an administrative procedure. We found an administrative procedure to determine tests or potential, what tests would be excluded. That, and I, look, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but we are in a, we are in a position here that even if we were to do an RFP right now, based on the comments made from the administration, it is unclear what is eligible and ineligible to be considered. In fact, it's been made clear that certain things aren't to be considered.
Actually, I disagree. The executive order does not take any questions or any vendor off the table. The issue is that in the past, when DRC has worked with other vendors, those vendors have been listed in the contract. There has been transparency about who is actually providing the test items. In this case, DRC is, according to the comments that have been made, was going to purchase items from a vendor that was not listed in the contract. This is about transparency. We have not said that we would take any items or vendor off the table from consideration. And I know what the elephant in the room here is, if Park bid on this contract, would that be acceptable? The answer to that question is only if the RFP was not rigged. And so that would be an assessment that would be done according to the procurement laws to whether or not the RFP was fair.
I appreciate the answer. Who do you think gets to determine the RFP?
It's not what I think, actually. The law says that DOA does a review of RFPs to ensure that they're in compliance with the law.
But in terms of the content of the question, which is an educational issue, the content of the question, who gets to determine that?
We're not deciding what it's the content of the question, we're deciding who the vendors are.
Exactly, that's exactly what we're doing. Look, we're choosing a test that we want to base our education system on for our kids. So the content of the question is critical. We don't choose a random test that we've never seen and didn't participate in. That makes no sense. No, no, no. Wait, so, look, y'all want to have this discussion, we ought to have this discussion. Y'all want an open discussion, we're having an open one right now. So who determines the educational content that is acceptable?
The discussion on the table today is about a transparent process that complies with the competitive bid law. It is not about the content of the questions on the test.
May I?
Yes.
It's actually not about that. And while people have dragged the conversation into that, and while procurement is a step in the process, it actually is about a much larger question, which has nothing to do with education. It's about who is obligated to do various things and to make various decisions. Part of that is procurement, as Ms. Palmieri mentions. But procurement is colliding with education policy here, and that's not going to get resolved, because you can hear just in this dialogue, the lack of clarity. And so procurement law may well be clear. Education law and constitutional law may well be clear, but when they come together on one single matter around one single decision, it's not clear. And that is the issue in which we find ourselves. I would encourage you as a board, whatever you need to do to take, even if it's a small step or a big step, forward toward clarity to help us do this. You can see that at our level, at the executive level, we're not going to resolve this ourselves.
And all I would add to that is that in the meantime, while clarity is being obtained, we have not heard a plan for the assessment that would be used for the 2014-15 school year. And we have called upon Superintendent White to come up with a Plan B, in particular for this year, while we go through a public process. But that the clarity, that the clarity process that he's laid out, whether that's a declaratory judgment, which we do have the authority to appeal or not appeal, or whether that's another legal mechanism, is going to take time. And in the meantime, teachers do not know what assessment is going to be used next year. And that is a problem. And I think that school districts deserve that clarity and deserve the assurance that they know what is coming next year. And I would also point out that the current pathway, irrespective of our position on Park or of any vendor, is that we had a contractor that was going to purchase test items from a vendor that was not listed in the contract. That in and of itself, whether we supported Park or didn't support Park, is not a pathway that results in a test for spring 2015.
Ms. Palmieri...
So that results in an RFP.
May I say, may I say, it is a bold thing for someone in your office at present to argue on behalf of timeliness for teachers.
And I would also argue, and I appreciate that Superintendent White, but you waited, you waited until now to have this conversation and to bring this contract to Ms. Nichols for review.
Ms. Palmieri, I appreciate it. Look, please, everyone.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes, Dr. Marany has waited patiently, and I've missed her for 25 minutes.
I have been. I think that you really see, we do need the clarity. We do need the clarity. And I definitely want independent counsel. But I want them to be able to tell me if what our governor did was constitutional or not constitutional. Then we can go to the next step. That's all we need right now. Because we, as a board, need to know how we're going to go forward with this. Now, this sounds very simplistic for me, but I thought we were okay through 2015.
The current state of the contract is that the administration has suspended activity for development of future tests.
What we've suspended is any activity outside the scope of the current DRC contract, which would, based on Superintendent White's comments, would preclude purchasing test items from a vendor that is not listed in the contract. So at this point, there is no test for next year.
May I make a suggestion?
Okay.
Just a thought. Look, we're not going to agree, we're not going to reach agreement with the administration on this question. We've had those conversations multiple times. I don't mind taking it one step at a time, Dr. Marany. Now, time is a critical factor, though. Okay? No one is, this board is not looking for lawsuits, okay? We're not looking for that.
We're not looking for lawsuits.
We're at this point because I no longer have the ability to keep searching for clarity without getting approval from this board. That's why we're here today, okay? So we can do this in two steps, okay? And you're going to get an opinion. All you're going to get, understand this, though, all you're going to get is opinion from counsel, okay, as to what they believe may or may not be constitutional. That's the problem with a two-step process, because ultimately, it still has to be determined by a judge, okay? So I'm laying out why this is a, and why we're here today, and why it is complicated, and why we need to try to seek a path that gets done relatively quickly so we resolve these problems one way or another. So if you take just the first step, you're still not going to resolve your question. You're just going to get an opinion. And then you're going to have to decide, do you want to take that opinion and go get it tested in a court of law? That's my opinion of where we stand. But this is the board's decision to make. Yes, Ms. Bradford?
Stafford, I'm hearing from the governor's office that you would sit down to the table if we felt like that would be productive, but maybe after this meeting, we don't know that that would be that productive. But I do, and that was Jane's suggestion, we agree. And so I just say that, knowing that maybe that ship has sailed, but...
We would be happy to sit down and have that conversation, happy. I don't mean to interrupt.
You know, I'm just going to say, I know, Chaz, that in this forum, it has not been an effective dialogue, and we need other players at the table, perhaps.
I don't think the dialogue's been that bad. It's been heated, but it's been a good dialogue.
But we need to be productive and move forward with it. There's no need to have dialogue if there's not some result from it.
Now, look, go ahead, go ahead.
But that's one option that we have. The second option is, I would like to know if there's a way to change the verbiage in this resolution so that we can seek clarity but not be obligating ourselves to a suit unless it came back to the full board. Is that...
Sure, that's possible. That's your prerogative, okay? We proposed a resolution and a method. That wasn't a random method, it was a method of knowing that time was of the essence and how will we best get this done quickly. So your suggested path, while more cumbersome, may be the one that you feel more comfortable with.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Smith?
Okay, so, but if we ask for declaratory judgment, to get declaratory judgment, you have to file suit. Someone has to file suit.
I mean, I'm assuming...
To get declaratory judgment, you have to file suit. So that's why I wish that we would look at the first alternative that I mentioned and also Ms. Bradford, that, okay, maybe it hasn't been productive in the past, but I think we're at the point now that the quickest way to try to solve this is for the governor of the state of Louisiana to sit down with the superintendent of the state of Louisiana and their attorneys and work this out outside of a court of law.
My, I appreciate your comments. There is an issue to be resolved within that conversation that I don't know, and I want to, again, this is open discussion, here's the issue. This BSE board has passed a policy to pursue Common Core standards. That has also been upheld by the legislature, okay? And so that seems like is a critical component of any discussion that we'd have with the governor, is that those elements must remain part of the solution or that solution runs afoul of the law. Do you follow what I'm saying? It's not just a decision by the governor that he doesn't want to do with the legislature or the best he chooses. Now, I'm very happy, by the way, so I'm very happy to go have that conversation. Okay, I'm very, I would support that, if that's what just makes this board happy, because I, again, I'm not looking for a lawsuit. I will say it will cost us time, and there's plenty of evidence to suggest, I'm not certain there's common ground there, okay? But that, I wanted to make that comment.
And I appreciate that. And so in good faith, I would like to make a substitute motion at the appropriate time that we table the resolution to hire legal counsel and we ask y'all to go sit down, John White, the governor of this state, our legal counsel that we have, the governor's legal counsel, and work this out so that we can get information to our school systems in a timely manner. That will be the quickest way to resolve this. And I will tell you this, Mr. President, if y'all can't resolve it, then you got to do what you got to do.
Ms. Rowan Jones?
I just want to be, I just want to make sure we understand the course of events that led to this. My understanding is that is that there has been conversations, that the sit-down has already occurred and that there was not able to reach, that's why we don't have the clarity. So can I, we just get an update, have you had that discussion? I just want to make, I thought that was what was already had, and they wasn't able to reach that clarity, which is why we are here.
That's true. Previous to the governor's and the commissioner's particular orders, that was true. However, circumstances change. And people are put in different positions and there's different incentives. I don't think, my personal view of Ms. Smith's recommendation, I think it makes a lot of sense, I don't think it's mutually exclusive from pursuing other paths either, however.
I'd like to clarify, in the conversations we've had up to this point, they've been about pursuing a transparent process. We have not had specific conversations with Nichols and Superintendent White or with our office on procurement specifically and what it means to comply with Louisiana procurement law. And Ms. Nichols has made several requests of the department for information. We've gotten, they have received some information, have not received all the information. So in terms of actually, and I think really the issue today is, is it possible for Data Recognition Corporation to purchase items from a third vendor, third-party vendor that is not in the contract, to insert into Louisiana tests without there being an additional public process? That is the question. That is a legal question about the procurement code, it is not a content question, and I have this...
Let me just again say, first of all, I'm not interested in, and I'm not going to argue with my colleagues about procurement law. I believe that this is about much bigger things than just procurement law, because I don't believe that we simply arrived at a focus on these extremely picky-un issues related to these contracts among hundreds that exist in the state by coincidence. We arrived at them because of concerns about education policy and because of governmental branch relations. Thus, I would suggest that this is a much larger issue than just a question of as to whether or not one contract had been done one way or not. Remember, as by their own admission, the administration wasn't even aware of our plans to do that until after the governor issued all of his executive orders. So there apparently were significant policy concerns in advance of this concern. Thus, I would advise, and I'm happy to accept whatever language is needed, about sitting down and having a discussion. On the other hand, I would advise that we need to pursue the process of clarity beyond what my counsel and I... beyond what my counsel and I are capable of providing you.
And let me say this. I would... You made an important point that the board needs to consider. I'm going to restate it. And that point was, the executive orders were issued well in advance of any method of obtaining the PARC test being said publicly. Okay? Do you understand that? So the executive order to remove us from Common Core and remove us from PARC and remove us from the MOU was done long before the procurement question was found. The procurement question came as something to hang your hat on. Okay? I want to make that clear. Now, that being said, that being said, there are two issues, apparently. They have a procurement question. I'm not going to say that's legitimate or illegitimate. I think the way that's been outlined, that it can be procured, is legitimate, okay? The second one, though, is more critical and more difficult. Look, we're going to follow procurement law in this state, okay? Let's be clear about that. We're going to follow that. But the second point is more critical, which is who has the constitutional authority to determine the educational content of our assessments, okay? And I'm telling you now, the evidence suggests that the administration has chosen that they don't believe that content can include Common Core nor come from PARC. That's why we're here. No, that's...
With all due respect, Mr. Roemer, that's actually not accurate. And the reason we got to the point we are today is because... Because due to... And John mentioned this earlier, that there had been a discussion of having a competitive process before the PARC test was implemented in Louisiana. And in the MOU, there is no commitment to purchase any test items without a competitive process. Emails that were exchanged between the Department of Education and the Division of Administration in prior years between 2010 and present indicated there would be a competitive process. We were up to the... We were under the impression, up to this point, that there would be a competitive process. When we had a conversation about having a competitive process... Hold on one second. When we had a conversation with Superintendent White about having a competitive process, the answer was, we don't need to have a competitive process. And so we had to take executive action.
I appreciate it. Here's my suggestion to the board, because we can do this all night. Here's my... Here's my suggestion to the board, and the board does not have to receive it, that we do both simultaneously. That we ask John White and his DOE attorneys to go to the governor and see if there's a resolution. At the meantime, we simultaneously pursue what we need to pursue to get clarity. And we will not move forward with that second step unless we get a report back that they cannot resolve the differences.
We need to change the language of the resolution, yeah?
I came just as a matter of procedure, just to answer a procedural question I believe a board member asked. And again, this depends on the disposition of the board. But in terms of the Administrative Procedures Act, you know, to the extent that the department were to execute the 2015 testing under a current instrument, and we were to raise question with that particular instrument. Because at this point, in the absence of being able to do that, a separate procurement has to be done. And I think the assumption is that would have to be competitive because it more than likely wouldn't qualify for sole source. So looking at the current instruments as a mechanism would require, or inadvertently would receive, our review within the Office of Contractual Review, at which time, we would suspend the services by which the contract is being administered to review its compliance with the Administrative Procedures Act. And at which time, we made a determination that it did not comply, or we felt we needed to review it, we would suspend and ask for justification from the department, as we have done over the last few weeks, at which time, they would then respond to us, and then the Commissioner of Administration makes a determination as to appropriateness of that contract. To the extent that Bessie directly intercedes with some type of court intervention, the court doesn't have jurisdiction over the Administrative Procedures Act without the proper process being followed internally within the department. So that's one point of consideration in terms of timing that you have to make. I don't think that you can, as a board, circumvent the Administrative Procedures Act with an immediate court intervention. And so when I've made the recommendation to the board previously about seeking guidance, the law stipulates the process by which the board should, at least in the immediate next step, seek guidance. And we certainly are happy to sit down with the department and review all of the contracts in play and make that determination with the department. And then in the future, if we and should proceed with a competitive procurement, we would need to do so with the department in a manner that obviously is in accordance with procurement laws. And I think it's important that state procurement is very clear. You cannot work with one vendor, our party, and create an unfair advantage with that party in their ability to compete for a competitive bid.
I appreciate your comments. And again, we could do this all night. But I'm going to ask either of you to respond. Procurement is certainly a question to consider. Again, I go back to my other question. Because we've never argued that we don't want to do an RFP process, okay? That's not... Here's the question. Who gets to determine the educational content of our assessment? And can that be determined through the procurement administrative tools that you have? Can that... Can certain educational content be prohibited that way?
Policy and procurement intersect every day. It's not confusing. I've run two agencies, and I've been in state government for 12 years. We consistently, in state agencies, work with the legislature, our boards, our directors, the governor's office, to execute policy. To the extent you have a policy disposition in law and through your own regulations, that is what the procurement office would execute. What you can't do is circumvent the procurement process just because you want to expedite the policy you feel justified in expediting.
Can you circumvent the legislative process?
No.
Okay. I think they've made it pretty clear what they want to do.
Well, to the extent you want to circumvent the legislative procurement laws, no, you can't do that either.
No. Let's be clear. We're at an impasse here. There's a reason we're here, is that unilateral action was taken by the governor.
No, there's no impasse. If you design an RFP that's in accordance with your policy laws...
And I'm here to say, I don't believe the design of that RFP should be determined by you. I believe it should be determined by the Bessie Board and the legislature.
But it still leaves Bessie and the department with no...
That's what the Constitution says.
If that's your position, that's your position. But what I would say to this board is, state law gives you no other avenue to execute the test for 15. If you choose to take the disposition that this board has unilateral authority over procurement because you don't like the disposition of the division, you don't have a vehicle.
I didn't say that. That's not what I said. That's not what I said. It was not what I intended to say, okay? It's not what I said. What I wanted to say is, the administration has made clear policy statements that certain questions and content would not be allowed by the...
I can't... I cannot circumvent the legislature and its policy determinations in procurement, just as you can't circumvent the legislature and its procurement laws in your execution of that policy. That's very clear.
I agree with that. I don't disagree with that. All right, board, we can do this all night, and you see why we needed a meeting. And you see that I could not get any clarity anymore on my own, okay? And despite my attempts to do so, okay? It is my recommendation to this board, and you don't have to take it. You have to make a motion to do this. It's my recommendation that you pursue both paths, that we ask the superintendent to go sit down with the administration and see if they can resolve it. But we move simultaneously to retain counsel and be prepared to pursue swift action. That's my recommendation.
Chairman Roemer, if I might have just a minute. I'm Judge Glover from Lafayette, and I love these two women that just spoke. They seem to have their act together, and they're very, very well-informed people. There's several things I'd just like to answer. One big thing came up in her discussion that was never closed. She said, "The governor's office asked Superintendent White to make a Plan B." Did this happen?
My... First of all...
Was the question, "Did we ask Superintendent White to..."
First of all, wait a second. We're a little bit out of order here, okay? I appreciate your coming. I don't... I didn't get your name.
Judge Glover.
Okay. And I need you to fill out a card, okay? I don't have it.
Okay.
Okay. So repeat your question.
This is extemporaneous. I have not filled out a card. I just want to answer to that question. Did he actually prepare Plan B? Or did he not do what the governor's asking, office asking to? And if that's the case, we ought to look at Mount Pheasants in office.
Well, gentlemen, sir, sir, I will say this. The superintendent has followed the policies that this board has directed him to follow. And the question is, can the governor, just on his own, direct the educational policy in this state? And I'm telling you, the Constitution doesn't allow that.
He's a state employee. The governor can ask him to do something.
You can't just ask... He worked for us. He's hired by us. He's hired by us. And just because the governor says something, okay?
He's not doing a good job.
That's the whole question. Look, I don't... The whole question is, who gets to determine these answers, okay? That's what we're trying to get resolution. I may be told I'm wrong.
Can we get an up or down vote on the Common Core today?
We've had that vote multiple times, sir. Look, we're here... I made a suggestion, Ms. Smith, do you have a...
Could we... Let me ask you this, with all due respect, and I understand, and I'm trying to work with you on this. Can we do this in two different motions? Because I'm obviously not going to... I'm not going to vote to file suit against the governor. So if we could do it in... You know, I would say, my motion could be that we table the resolution to hire legal counsel, and that we, once again, things change. Adults, mature individuals ought to be able to sit down and work something out. And then if you can't, you can't. But that would be my substitute motion.
Is your... So restate your substitute motion.
My substitute motion is to table the motion to hire special counsel and to ask the governor of the state of Louisiana to meet with his attorney and with Superintendent White and our attorney to discuss a quick solution before school starts and report back to Bessie at a date, June 15th or whatever, June 15th, June 18th. Let's say that. Excuse me, July. Within the next two weeks.
Yes.
First of all, the original motion, the resolution's not on the floor. It's not been offered as a resolution, okay? It's been read into the record, but no one's made a motion to approve that resolution. So the first part of your motion is not called for or required to table, okay?
So just the motion to ask the superintendent and the governor and their legal staff to sit down and work this out and report back to us in the next two weeks. That's my motion.
All right, we do have public comment. Yeah, I'll tell you, for the sake of board members being able and others, we'll take a two-minute recess, and we'll come back in.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he did what the people have asked him to do. But I do think that there's still...
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things.
That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
But I do think that there's still some.
I'm just, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do.
People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough. But I do think that there's still some. I'm just, I'm just. Oh, yeah, yeah. He, he did what the people have asked him to do. People assume things. That's what I thought, but I think he's done it long enough.
If everybody will quickly find their seats. If everybody will quickly find their seats. We... I'm gonna ask something of the audience which you certainly can ignore. We've got another very large stack of comment cards. And I think we've heard a lot of opinion and a lot of argument from every perspective you could have. And I would ask you to either, I'll be glad to read into the record, or you can come forward and read your name into the record and make a quick statement. But I'd like to not have the two minutes discussion, because that will be another two hours, unless, of course, you really believe you have a new idea that has not been spoken to that. Now, that's what I'm gonna ask. I'll call your name, and you can tell me you waved. You can come forward and say, "I'd just like to say my name, and this is what I'd like you to do," or you can take your minute, okay? I'm hoping for the first. I'm optimistic about the second, and I'm hoping the third doesn't happen. So, anyway, we will go to public comment, and then I will, following public comment, I will look to board members for a motion. Leslie Truax. Okay? And I'll get to Sarah in a second if she wants to come, that'd be fine. Katrina Anderson? Katrina? Oh, I'm sorry. Philip Rosman? Thank you. Michael Tempton? Gone. I'm gonna go through a few of these names and get to you real quick. Kate Mihak? Gone. Tony Leji? Thank you, sir. Tricia Miller? Tricia Miller? Mickey Landry? Thank you, sir. Eric Lewis? Thank you, sir. Bridget Nealan? Barry Irwin? Amanda Stinson? I believe Kristy Nichols left. Did Kristy leave? She waved. Thank you. Leslie Truax? Okay, thank you, sorry. Danny Garrett? Thank you, sir. Anthony Nichols, or I believe it was Anthony Nichols? Gone. Deanne Russell? Mercedes Snyder? Okay. Vicki Johnston? So, we got Vicki here. Marla Baldwin? Catherine Gopple. Catherine Gopple, okay. Candace Watzey? Okay, and let's start there. Did you say your name?
Hi, I'm Katrina Anderson. I work in the Kane Center at LSU. I simply want to say that, while I've enjoyed the conversation today, if it wasn't evident before, it certainly is now, that there are not easy answers, that these are very tough decisions with heated emotions from many angles. So, I would implore you not to limit your actions moving forward, but to move forward in as many avenues as possible, as quickly as possible, so that we can actually get to a real resolution and let teachers do what they need to do in preparing their students for whatever the right future is. We need to move forward, and now is not the time for delay.
Thank you.
My name is Vicki Johnston. I'm a first-grade teacher in Calhoun Parish. I just have three questions. If it's pro bono, why do you need to hire them? If there is a contract, are they gonna be reimbursed in some form or fashion for some expenses? The other is, there have to be 15 states still in the park consortium, and if one more state falls out, that means 14, and he's on the governing board, he might be able to answer that, but we were under the assumption that that meant that the funding from the federal government would stop if it dropped below 15. And the other is, how is this going to proceed quickly when the Department of Education does not give the documents to the Commissioner of Administration when they ask for them? Are there gonna be further delays in getting documentation to get this resolved in the court quickly?
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Mike Destotel? Thank you, sir. Steve Monahan? Bob Reed? Elizabeth Meyer? I'm gonna call a couple more while you're coming. Dr. Myers? Thank you. Ralph Rochto? That's Bob Reed. You're up, sir.
First, I want to talk about the motion, and I'm definitely against it. I'm here also to speak on behalf, as the spokesperson for the Tea Party of Louisiana. We're 13,000 strong now, and we're growing every day. And we are just citizens interested in restoring our government to the constitutional government and Judo-Christian foundation that it was built upon. I wrote my three-minute piece to BESI because it's directed to the BESI Board, and I'd like to read it into record. You have made it clear that you want Louisiana to implement the federally-directed Common Core and Park. The Tea Party of Louisiana vehemently disagrees with you for taking that position and urges you to comply with the directives of Governor Gendel and remove Louisiana from all Common Core initiatives and park testing. This is far too important to be politically correct, so we will speak plainly and clearly why you and every BESI member, as a patriotic American, should want to comply with the parents and the governor and help lead their state out of Common Core standards and park tests. We have been dealing with a slow creep of socialist infiltration into our public school system for the last six to seven decades. During this time, there had been a real resistance by Louisiana and American parents to believe that schools were changing from centers of education to federal indoctrination camps. But with the implementation of Common Core over these past few years by this lawless Obama administration, and now our very own complicit BESI and Louisiana Department of Education and the 2014 Louisiana Legislature, parents are waking up in increasing numbers everywhere in Louisiana and all across this nation. It's past time to wake up and smell the socialism and the dismantling of our nation. Public or government schools are becoming federal indoctrination camps rapidly, designed to erase our children's Judo-Christian foundations. They're becoming centers of sexually acceptance training, promoting the rejections of our constitutional republic, and the rejection of parental influence and authority. Now increasingly mandated is the rejection of knowledge mastery in favor of mental hygiene. Consensus and acceptance training, global citizenship, and the lifelong surveillance of our children and us, the very foundation of our state, is the education of its youth. And dare we forget what Adolf Hitler said, "Let me control the textbooks, and I will control this nation." So, as accurately foreseen in the unanimously passed 12-1...
Wrap it up.
12-1, two more paragraphs. 12-1, 2011 National Federation of Republican Women Resolution, the national standards-based Common Core State Standards Initiative is the centerpiece of the Obama administration's agenda to centralize education decisions at the federal level. And today, we're at the pivotal point of adopting or not the implementation tool for the final social reengineering and mental reshaping of Americans and to non-Americans that would truly transform America forever. And this centralized federally-controlled Common Core provides that final foundation for this political, corporate, or more plainly fascist takeover and manipulation of knowledge and learning by children. The schools would be the largest governmental organizations in America. Yes, Common Core will fundamentally change the way we educate our children and strip away the rights we, parents and children, have. It will be the crown jewel for the final part of the communist takeover of America from within, as stated in their 45 goes published in the 1958 The Naked Communist, and I quote number 17. Get control of schools, use them as transmission belts for socialism and current communist propaganda, soften the curriculum, get control of teachers' association, put the party line in textbook. Can it be said any more plainly or explicitly? Last sentence. The Tea Party of Louisiana echoes the cries of the tens of thousands of Louisiana moms and parents and millions across this nation for you to stand bold and to immediately extricate Louisiana from all aspects of Common Core initiative, park testing, in compliance with Governor Gendel's executive order number BJ 2014-6 and 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Next time you say two paragraphs, I'll consider that a little more closely, I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you for your patience. Is this on?
Yes, sir, I believe it is.
Thank you for your patience in hearing this man out. I concur with his conclusions, okay? Now, Mr. White said that it's gonna be really complicated to remove us from Common Core. Is it as complicated as the Common Core may? I mean, have you seen this stuff that's just insane? And we're gonna try to force this upon our children. There is a name for the questions and the information that's been released from tests that's released to the public. It's called Common Knowledge. We don't need Common Core for Common Knowledge. Now, today, we're set to be celebrating 40-year anniversary of adopting Common Core. The final draft of Common Core standards was published on June 2nd. We accepted the Common Core standards before the final draft was accepted. We want to feed the public. That's why the governor's changed his avenue on Common Core, because he accepted it believing the words that someone else told him. He took it on faith, and now that he sees it in writing, he's rejecting it, as are the parents of the children that are receiving the Common Core. We reject it too. We know what it is.
Can I ask you to...
We're on this farm, and we reject it.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Catherine Gopple? I know I'm misspelling, I know I'm mispronouncing your last name, I apologize.
Ms. Catherine.
I'll go through a few more names real quick to see if that's okay. Lee Berrios? Gone. Patricia Terry? You wanna speak? Okay, you can come forward. And then I've got Sarah Wood as well. Okay.
Can we give her two minutes, because Sarah?
She'll have three minutes. I mean, that's the most I give anybody who represents a whole group, so I'll give her three minutes. Okay?
Let me go first, okay, thank you. My name is Catherine Guppelt. It's a good German name, all the vowels are sounded with a U phonetically.
I appreciate that. Romer's German as well.
Yes, I was gonna ask you that, but thank you for bringing that up. A lot of good things came from the Germans, some bad things too. Unprecedented action, unprecedented circumstances, yes, but Superintendent White and Mr. Romer, you are making it worse. The fact that you placed these items on the agenda, and now we know why you don't think there'll be a need to do Agenda Item 3.3, is because you proposed this resolution to hire legal counsel in 3.2. Your legal counsel will likely tell you that you have a good chance to prevail. Governor Gendel's legal counsel will tell him the same, and neither side will make a decision, but a judge will tell you what to do, and the outcome is uncertain. I appreciate the option that was given by Ms. Smith to have a conversation among the interested parties. I would encourage you, do not vote for both options. If you give Mr. White the option to go sit down with the governor, he will have no incentive to come to any agreement of any kind, if he knows that he can quickly walk out the office and file suit. You are now in a battle to let a judge decide who's right. Teachers and students must sit on the sidelines and wait while you duke it out. Who will put the children first? Parents, grandparents, and citizens concerned about the education of the children are here today to ask that you do not take the turn of litigation that will waste precious resources and surely remove you from the path of putting the children first. What we are saying, this is another question. What are we saying to our children by considering litigation? What example are we making for them? Think about it. They will be the ones who will suffer the most for the choices they had no voice in deciding. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe I had called you next.
My name is Patricia Terry, and I'm with the Louisiana Power Coalition. I am from Shreveport, Louisiana. The thing I wanted to say today is, last year, I think it was October or November, came before this committee, this board, and talked about Common Core and Park, and how as a parent, grandparent, was against Common Core and Park, and you didn't listen. We went to the legislature this year. We spoke our hearts, we had parents talking about the problems they were having with their kids, and with the way things have been going with Common Core and Park, and they didn't listen. In my opinion, we went to the governor, a lot of the parents did, and I believe he listened. I do not believe that you should have independent counsel to start suing the governor over this issue. I believe if you can sit down and do administratively between White and his counsel, and the governor and his counsel, to work out like grown adults, that it would be a better solution for the children of our state. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Sarah Wood, St. Tammany Parish. I'm against y'all doing this, going to legal counsel, but I hope that, I'm sure you're gonna ignore us, and I hope that in receiving your legal advice, that you are informed that you are wasting your time and you are wasting taxpayer money in pursuing any lawsuits to assert your claims, as not only are there clear, clarity, clear and specific laws against you, but there is also consideration of all the laws as a whole that will be considered relative to actions taken with regards to Common Core and Park. And they all seem to paint a pretty clear picture, a picture that with all of the significant changes impacting our children through Louisiana education in an unholy, unprecedented manner from this Common Core initiative that includes Park, the public's trust has been violated in that the laws that are intended and required to further that trust through proper and effective oversight were effectively circumvented in many respects on the outer fringes of what may be illegal. But when considered in totality, as a judge will do, the picture painted with the help of all of us, and I can assure you I will give every moment of my time to this, the picture painted with the help of all of us involved will move a judge to rule against the legality of your actions, as clearly having broken laws and violating the public's trust. And yet, with all of this... And yet, with all of this before you, the actions by the parents, the uproar, the pleading by the parents because of their very real concerns that you continue to ignore, here you continue to railroad us like true elitist, ignoring parents and now the governor, pressing onward, employing a tactic, employing a tactic that if you knew anything about history is used commonly by communists. You make fun of that, me, and my family lost their country to shenanigans like this in Cuba. Used commonly, your tactic, by communists referred to as a democratic centralism. At its core, democratic centralism is a communist doctrine requiring a consensus achieved, listen closely, achieved by a small group to be imposed on a larger group that does not allow for deviation once the small group arrives at a consensus. Once the decision or the end goal is determined, there is only planning and execution, or rather, the means by which to accomplish that determined end, as decided by that small group, completely ignoring any opposition. Sound familiar? A common plan of execution employed by Communist China, go look it up in the Library of Congress, I didn't get this on a blog, is known as a united front. A united front is a coalition using organizations and groups for the sole purpose of building public support to achieve the end goal. These same strategies are alive and well today, not in Russia, Venezuela, or China, but here in Louisiana by this board.
Ms. Romer, I was going to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
And commonly throughout America, with the Common Core propaganda and uniformed talking points spewed by paid advocates, lobby, cable, APEL, Stand On Children, the chambers, the United Way, the PTA, our local media, and it is frighteningly obvious at three sentences. So whether you admit, so whether you admit it, it is meaningless. Whether you admit it is meaningless because the perception is clear, and that is that at a minimum, your actions individually and as a whole has destroyed the trust and the credibility of this department and the Board of Education, and that is something that your darlings of special interest in the media will not be able to cover up for you. It is something so clear that to those with no financial interest whatsoever, that any real and honest judge will easily see this for what it is and rule against you completely. So again, disregard me, disregard the people of this state, and go forth doing what is wrong.
Thank you for your comments. Ga Terry? Ga Terry? Terry Timico? James Crumling? Dominique McGee? Thank you. Lenny De Toro? Ginny Klein? Thank you. Debbie Sax? Thank you very much. I do have some cards that I'm just going to read into the record. They did not wish to speak. Mary Centany supports the recommendation. Ellen Daughtry supports the recommendation. Bob Brown supports the recommendation. Dana Henry supports the recommendation. Charmaine Coshapia supports the recommendation. Betty Hope supports the recommendation. Madeline Schink supports the recommendation. Ruthie Fryerson supports the recommendation. Ann Robyn supports the recommendation. Nancy Marsiglia supports the recommendation. Rita Gutierrez supports the recommendation. Hunter Howe supports the recommendation. Rory Dinacola supports the recommendation. Shannon Benutu supports the recommendation. Lena Venable supports the recommendation. Kim Sport supports the recommendation. William Howery supports the recommendation. Christopher Garner supports the recommendation. Deondra Hill supports the recommendation. Mary Louise Phoenix supports the recommendation. Wayne Cola supports the recommendation. Destiny Nico Pree supports the recommendation. I apologize. Dolores Bishop supports the recommendation. Jade Brown supports the recommendation. Cheryl Dupree supports the recommendation. Rachel Guidry supports the recommendation. Keisha Dupickley supports the recommendation. June Leopold supports the recommendation. Veronica Brooks supports the recommendation. Morgan Carter Ripski supports the recommendation. Peter Cook supports the recommendation. Davis Zonbriker supports the recommendation. Brian Adams supports the recommendation. Sandra Ardwan supports the recommendation. Stacy Morgan opposes the recommendation, and Constance Deanne Long opposes the recommendation. That concludes all the public comment members. What's that?
I need that.
Ms. Smith? Did someone say they filled out a card? Didn't you?
I waited my time.
If you want to come forward, I didn't, I may have missed it, but if you can make sure you fill out another one and state your name. Or is that your question?
My name is Diane Long, and I am with Louisiana Power Coalition.
Okay.
I'm going to make this very brief. Let me read something that I think's very important. The power under the Constitution will always be in the people. It is entrusted for certain and defined purposes and for a certain limited period to representatives of their own choosing, and whenever it is executed contrary to their interest or not agreeable to their wishes, their servants can and undoubtedly will be recalled.
Thank you.
I end my.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Board members, that concludes the public comment on this issue. Ms. Smith, did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the spirit of trying to come to a quick conclusion without litigation, my motion is to direct the State Superintendent of Education to request a meeting or series of meetings with the governor, and I want to make this clear, the governor, not his staff, the governor and the governor's legal counsel regarding the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen state academic assessments, and report to the board by July the eighteenth, twenty fourteen, on the results of such a meeting. And, Mr. President, I don't know that it has to be in a formal board meeting, but with results of that meeting either by email or whatever would be the will of the board, but I'll read this again if you want me to, but that's the motion.
I see.
I think we've got the motion.
Okay.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Dr. Beebe. Is there any objection to that motion? Here none, so move.
Thank you, members.
Is another member wish to move on a second item?
Yes, we have the resolution that was read into the record by our staff, and I'd like to make the motion that we accept that resolution and the actions that it recommends, except to exclude the ability of the officers and the legal counsel that they would retain to move forward with filing any lawsuit or taking any other similar legal proceedings or initiating any other legal proceedings, but retaining the rest of the intentions and the wording of the motion.
So you mean without coming to the board?
Of course. The board can always change what happens when, at a later meeting.
Well, I just, to clarify, Mr. Garvey, so you're looking to amend on the second page the paragraph that therefore be it resolved, and you want?
Yeah, let me read what it would say. Therefore be it resolved that Louisiana State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education does hereby authorize its officers to retain the firms of, and you read the names of the firms, subject to the approval of the Louisiana Attorney General to represent the board's interests and to take legal steps necessary to attain clarification, removing the words and resolution regarding the matters referenced in this resolution and matters related thereto up to but not including the filing of a lawsuit or taking any similar legal proceedings.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garvey, can you repeat that last part? Up to?
Up to, but not including filing a lawsuit or taking any similar legal proceedings. So a lawsuit and any other similar legal proceedings would not be authorized.
So there was a second. I don't know who made it.
No.
Okay, Dr. Morant, you made the second. Dr. Beebe?
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, what is the point of the resolution if we're not going to take? So you're asking legal counsel just to render an opinion?
To give his counsel. We actually, for us, I don't mean to interrupt. The law reads for us to actually have outside counsel, even for the sake of getting outside counsel, we have to seek approval. So that is what, in essence, this motion is now saying, is go into the Attorney General's office to ask them for the right to retain counsel, and that counsel will provide legal opinion and counsel to us regarding this issue, but is not authorized on behalf of this board, either through the board officers or themselves, to actually file a lawsuit or anything. They'd have to come back to us with a report, and then we could decide, you know, if we want to take another step or not. I mean, that's a layman's description of it, I believe.
I believe so, yes.
Friendly amendment?
Yes, Dr. Morant.
Would we be able to say following the series of meetings?
I don't understand the question.
Another friendly amendment to say following the several sessions of meetings?
What would follow? Several sessions?
That we would not seek legal counsel now, following those meetings.
Between Superintendent and the governor? I would think that we would want to go, that the superintendent would want to go into those meetings after receiving advice from counsel as to what the legal situation is.
Would he wait for counsel to start those proceedings?
Ma'am?
He wouldn't wait for counsel to start those proceedings.
No, I would think he would start the proceedings, but he would also start talking to counsel also. So, you know, tomorrow morning, he would call the governor's office and start trying to set up the meetings that were the subject of the last motion, and tomorrow, he and the best president would call the law firms or would ask the Attorney General to start approving, the process of approving us to talk to the law firms.
Mr. President?
Well, so you're not accepting the friendly amendment, or are you still offering the friendly amendment?
Well, I would just hope that the process would work. I'm just an optimist.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, what I'd like to do is, in good faith, we don't need to have two things going at one time. If we're going to go over and try to work things out with the governor, and then the next, and then the next motion is to hire legal counsel, that for whatever reason, I think we ought to do it one step at a time. What I would like to do is offer a substitute motion to table hiring legal counsel until after we get the report on the eighteenth. And I think that would be a fair way to go into that meeting, and I'm trying to help this board not be dysfunctional, and I think if we're trying to hire legal counsel and file suit and also trying to go over and work it out, that's a conflict of interest.
But we're not hiring counsel to file suit.
So I'd like to take it one step at a time. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to table the hiring of legal counsel, special counsel, until we get the report from the Superintendent and the governor of the state on July the eighteenth. That's my motion.
I see.
Okay, and there's a, there's a second. Is there discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I would discuss. I would say that that would just delay things.
I think it would speed them up.
And we might as well have two, I think the superintendent is fully capable of handling the two issues at the same time, running concurrently.
But I don't think you're issuing goodwill when you do that, and that's my point. We don't need to try to hire legal counsel until after they've met.
Yeah, give them an opportunity. Give them an opportunity.
Superintendent?
Chair, may I?
Yes.
So, so a couple of things. One is, we talked a lot today about the issue of time, so time is very important. So I am, I'm definitely against waiting to come back and have another meeting to consider the resolution and the motion that Mr. Garvey just put forward, because time is an issue here. The other thing is, who's to say that doing this the way that Ms. Smith is proposing wouldn't be a disincentive for the governor to sit down and have these conversations on a quick timeline like needs to happen? So I'm not going to be able to support.
Well, in point of order, point of order, I believe a motion to table is a non-debatable item.
Okay, fine, then we'll call the, we'll call the question. Roll call, please.
Well, point of order, not point of debate. Is this, would this motion prohibit the superintendent from talking to all legal counsel? Can he talk to his own legal counsel, the in-house counsel, to Ms. Joan Hunt?
My motion is to table the resolution to hire legal counsel that y'all gave us today at the ninth hour, and to allow for the superintendent and the governor of the state of Louisiana to meet, and that we not take further action until the eighteenth. And let me tell you, if you're worried about speeding up things, you should have voted for my motion earlier today.
And so for clarification?
So I moved to table, I moved to table Mr. Garvey's motion.
So for clarification, we are allowing the superintendent to speak to his in-house counsel, Joan Hunt?
Sure.
Okay, now, and?
We do that. I mean, y'all do it all the time, I'm sure.
With your intentions, how is that different?
Because you're going, you're seeking legal counsel outside of the department. You're seeking special counsel.
And how is?
Because you said that you didn't have confidence in the attorney that we had. You wanted to go outside, hire pro bono, and seek, get a constitutional lawyer. So obviously, that's a little bit different than Ms. Hunt. So my, my motion is to table your motion until we have the meeting with the governor and the superintendent of the state.
So I fully understand what you're trying to do here. You want the superintendent to go into the meeting not knowing the relevant constitutional issues?
I want him to go in like adults, mature adults, that have to work things out, and everything does not have to be settled in a court of law and litigation dragging on and on and on. That's my, that's my request.
Mr.?
Members, there's been a motion to table?
It's not debatable.
There's been a motion to table. We're going to do a roll call vote on the motion to table.
Writing up the technical motion?
Point of clarification. How many votes does it take to table? Six. Gotcha.
Ms. Smith, if we can just read, Linda will first read, Ms. Collier will first read the motion back to just sort of reiterate, and this is offering up some technical language, and let us know if that fits your wording first.
Okay. Okay, on motion of Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Hill, we will table consideration of the potential retention of special legal counsel regarding Executive Order Number BJ two oh one four six, Executive Order Number BJ two oh one four dash seven, and related information until the state superintendent, implementation, until the State Superintendent of Education provides a report regarding meetings with the governor and governor's legal counsel regarding twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen state academic assessments. Okay, and that clarifies that we're not, that we're not saying something can't happen after that date. We're just saying nothing happens until they've had a chance to meet. And one other thing, I want someone to clarify for me legally, because we've discussed this, and I can't remember, but to table a motion, doesn't it just take a majority?
For this board to take action, binding action, it takes six votes. So roll call, please.
Dr. Beebe?
Yes.
Dr. Beebe votes yes. Ms. Bofe?
No.
Ms. Bofe votes no. Ms. Bradford?
No.
Ms. Bradford votes no. Mr. Garvey?
No.
Mr. Garvey votes no. Mr. Gill is absent. Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Hill votes yes. Mr. Lee? Mr. Lee is not present. Dr. Morant?
No.
No.
Dr. Moranty votes no. Ms. Orange Jones?
No.
Ms. Orange Jones votes no. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Smith votes yes. Mr. Romer, do you wish to vote?
No. I vote no.
Okay, the motion did not pass.
So back to the original motion about Mr. Garvey. Was there a second for Mr. Garvey?
I second that.
The second by Ms. Bofe.
Okay, Dr. Moranty seconded that.
All right, second by Dr. Moranty. Any further discussion or clarification required on Mr. Garvey's motion? He mentioned it in his name. Is there objection?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Beebe?
No.
Dr. Beebe votes no. Ms. Bofe?
Yes.
Ms. Bofe votes yes. Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford votes yes. Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey votes yes. Mr. Guio is not present. Ms. Hill?
No.
Ms. Hill votes no. Mr. Lee is not present. Dr. Moranty?
Yes.
Dr. Moranty votes yes. Ms. Orange Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Orange Jones votes yes. Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Smith votes no. Mr. Romer, do you wish to vote?
Vote yes.
Mr. Romer votes yes. Motion passes.
That concludes item 3.2. There is no need for the last item. I would ask, motion not to go into executive session?
So move.
Of any objection? None, some of, yes. We can do it outside the board meeting, I mean...
We're here.
I'd like to hear it.
I'd like to hear it.
Sure, that's fine. Come on. If y'all would, if y'all would remain quiet for one more moment.
Can't hear you, Charles.
I will be very brief and simply want to make sure that everyone is on the same page as we leave this room. The, what our offer to Superintendent White is right now is that our staffs begin meeting immediately, throughout every day if necessary, and we, we set up the meetings as, in accordance with the motion, but we don't confine it to simply a meeting of the two, top two decision-makers in the state on this issue. We'd like to meet with their, with their staff starting immediately and make sure we can lay all the groundwork to provide our bosses with the information they need to, to have this negotiation. Now, the, and so, I would like to lay that offer on the table. The second thing is, I, I see these two items as they were passed as on separate tracks. And so it's, you know, we certainly have no dispute with the superintendent having whatever counsel he wants to, but to have counsel that, that is, you know, potentially about to, to initiate litigation, I mean, that's not in the spirit of how I saw those, these motions passed.
I say a couple of things. First of all, thank you, Mr. Enright, for that. The counsel, as I appreciate it, was not retained by the department, it was retained by the board. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. So it is not counsel to me, I, I am still staff to the board, I report to the board, and that those lawyers would be advising the board. We have counsel at the department that I will continue to use as counsel. Secondly, it has always been our policy that with the governor's office and with any other office, when we, when requested for our staff to participate in a meeting, in fact, though I recognize this discussion's been a point of contention, you should know that we've been in meetings in the last couple of days with the governor's office, and we look forward to those meetings. I don't think that is relevant to this particular order or this particular motion, but you should know, all of you, that we look forward to always meeting with the governor's staff, and we will do so on this matter if they, if they choose to do so.
Does that, does that clarify?
Yes, I believe so. Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming forward. Thank you. Now, we actually, on the last item before we dispense of it, there were comment cards on the item to go into executive session. I'm hoping that they will wave, given there was no need for executive session, but I'm going to call their name out again. Patricia Terry?
Catherine.
Catherine? Dana Garrett? Lee Barrios? Ralph Rochdoe? Thank you, sir. Dr. Myers?
Bill.
Thank you. Sarah Wood? I'm going to call out the last couple. Scott Richard? Waves. James Crumling? Okay. And I'm going to call out a couple more real quick before you start, Ms. Wood, if you don't mind.
No.
Dominique McGee? Thank you. Lenny Dittaro? Thank you. Anthony Nichols? Thank you. Jenny Klein? Debbie Sacks? Steve Monahan? Mercedes Schneider? Okay. Candace Watzey? Michael Desatell? Thank you. Bob Reed? So, Ms. Wood, we'll start with you.
Did you want to go first? Okay. Sarah Woods from Mandeville. I don't know what it is we don't understand about this park MOU. Mr. Garvey has a problem with it. It has very specific terms in here. It's very specific as to what we agreed to. The goal of the Louisiana MOU for the park is...
We're not on the, ma'am, with all due respect, we're not on the park MOU right now. And I've been here a long time.
I'm going to get there. It isn't about that. It isn't about that, and I have a right to speak, do I not?
Now, on the agenda item, on this item is very specific. It's, the item is to go into executive session, and we, which we already said we're not going to do.
Okay, well, then I will point out this, that I find it very funny that you all put out an agenda, y'all been putting out agendas I don't know how long, and yet it took three versions of an agenda, the last of which came out at 10:54 in the morning, 11:30 would have been, you know, violation of the amount of time that you were supposed to have the agenda out. I think it's funny that you had to try three times. You all have each other, you have the source, resources of the state, you have attorneys on hand, Ms. Hunt or whatever, you have the access to the AG. We have nothing. We, as the people of the state of Louisiana, have nothing. We are here at your mercy. I cannot believe that this is a representative of my democratic process. So what I feel is that in putting out those three agendas in three different versions, that to me, there was a clear attempt to circumvent the open meetings law, but then you finally hit upon the one that hit the broadest exception, because the law's very clear on the open meetings law. It's very, it's a very narrow construction for the exceptions. So that you all wanted to go into executive session for an attorney-client privilege, which I would argue maybe doesn't even apply to A-10. I would challenge the AG that that is even correct. But I will let you know that when you all come back to discuss whatever you're going to discuss as a result of the executive orders, that you all take a very close look whether you're deciding to go into executive session again with your, with your attorney or what have you, because I don't feel that you're, you're following the law. And I feel that there are many, many examples where you all don't follow the law, and this is what the governor recognized. And the only reason we had to plead to the governor, the only reason we had to plead to the governor is because we couldn't get this out of committee. Guess what? Because we have no money. We have no money. We don't have $2.4 million to spend on the composition of the Bessie board. We don't have money to put up the composition of the education committees that handle this. Everywhere we turn, you all are violating and supporting the violation of the democratic process, and I think it's just sick. I don't know how you just walk away, look at your phone and ignore.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Uh, Dr. Moranty?
I am so sorry that...
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, Dr. Moranty asked to speak real quick, it's okay.
I am so sorry the lady just left, because I really would like to have said something to her.
I got it now.
I can't hear you. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
How do you follow that? I agree with what she said. I wanted to ask, is this also a relevant time to ask the board questions? I don't know if, if...
We don't really do Q and A, but if you have questions...
This is just comment, this is no questions, all right? All right, that's, that's another problem that we have, executive session, no questions. These, you're supposed to be representing the people of Louisiana. You're not representing us. You're representing somebody else that we don't even recognize, not representing the parents. These people are here because their children are directly affected by the things that you do, and it's very important to them. We will remove Common Core, even if we have to remove y'all four first. But we, one way or another, we're going to remove Common Core, because these are the parents, they vote, they pay the taxes that you are enjoying. So that's all I got to say.
Appreciate your comment, sir. Reed?
I want to take a few minutes on this executive question, because I think the other two people have spoke very clearly about it, but I am going to address that. If you put that back on the agenda, I hope each and every one of you considered, that you're public servants, there is no closed rule, that you leave it open and we get to hear what is said and the executives say. Because you were elected officials to represent the republic, the public, and schools, of all things, should not be done in smoke-filled rooms making deals without the public being able to see what goes on. That's the problem with the school systems now. The tests are developed, the parents don't have any input, the teachers don't really have any input, especially with Common Core. And to really sit here, if educated people do not realize what's happening in other states where it is being implemented, why the heck is Massachusetts extricating themselves from Common Core? It's because the implementation of Common Core caused the luring of their scores, and they were leaving the nation. I encourage every one of you to look in the mirror and think about our children, our grandchildren, if you want in America, then do something about it. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Ms. Falsi?
I wish to speak.
Okay, we do have one more wishing to speak.
Hi, my name is Brooke Falgo. I'm a mother of seven. I have pulled my kids in favor of homeschool because of this. I have a daughter that's going to college to be a teacher, she's about to graduate. I'm fighting for her. Are all of y'all appointed or elected officials? Because we have all your campaign contributions, and we will work all year, and y'all will be gone next session.
Appreciate your comments.
The one that can stay, the other one can stay.
Okay, great.
The other ones never want to talk to you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. The following deny wish to speak. Stacy Morgan opposes the recommendation. Terri Jamika, I'm sorry, opposes recommendation. Guy Terry opposes the recommendation, and Constance Long opposes recommendation, or Diane Long, I'm sorry, opposes the recommendation. Those are all the public comments. There was a motion to not go into executive session. There was a second. There was no objection. Any further comment? I appreciate your time and patience.
Before you dismiss, though, I do have a comment. I did request, I think there is a tremendous need for transparency, and I started off the meeting, Mr. Romer, telling you how I was certainly not happy with your decision to exclude my requested items from the agenda, but I do have a constituent who made a request of me some months ago, which I did bring it to Bessie, and it dealt with the RS, let me find it here, it dealt with the, the employment of individuals who are from outside of the state and who earn in excess of $100,000, $100,000 or in excess of $100,000. Did communicate to Mr. White and ask for the information by Friday. I have yet to receive it as a Bessie member, and I received numerous emails, I'm copied, with requests for information, and the requests go denied or there, there is no response. So again, as we lead this meeting, I think the, the people who showed up today, it's evident there is a, a lack of trust of this administration, and I can say as a Bessie representative what my thoughts are. You know, if I'm treated with such disrespect as an elected member of Bessie, representing 15 parishes, then my, my heart goes out to these individuals who are, they have children who are deeply impacted by our actions, and so I just wanted you all to reflect on this, and certainly the next request, Mr. Romer, and, you know, I, I, I don't like having to, to copy Wilson Tell or Mike Hastings or Danielle, but I will do it, and I will continue to do it until I am respected as a, as an elected member of this body.
Let me make a comment real quick, and I know everybody's ready to go. I appreciate everybody's patience. It was difficult getting to this point. Dr. Beebe, when you made your request, I did respond to you, I did not respond to everybody that was on that email, I responded directly to you. I did not think you objected to me allowing your item to be heard on the agenda that exists. So I apologize for that miscommunication. I did not, I thought you were satisfied that I was going to allow you to make your motions, et cetera, under the existing agenda item, so, and I did not copy everybody else on that, but I did respond to you. So I do appreciate everyone's patience. You can see it was, it's a very complicated issue, and I did my best to come here and have a full and open forum of the agenda. I apologize that the agenda went through a couple of changes, but those were to make it better every time. We put it out a week early originally, which we didn't have to do, and in that week, we received feedback, and that's part of the reason of putting it out a week early. And we clarified it. So again, I appreciate everyone's patience and appreciate everyone being here today. That concludes our meeting. Thank you.